Guys, ready? Ready? Everybody ready? Good evening. Good evening, everyone. We thank you for attending our council meeting. And Marnie, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Steve Friedman.
Here.
Councilmember Deb Gillis.
Here.
Councilmember Anna Richards.
Here.
Vice Mayor Don Horton.
With bells on.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Brett Eckblum, would you lead us in the pledge?
(laughter) I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the liberty for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you very much. Okay, council. Requests for deletions, additions, emergency. Steve? Anna? Deb? The book? Excuse me? Oh. Yeah, I get that.
Sorry.
And Don?
No, ma'am, none.
Okay. Well, I have one. And I wanted to do this sooner than later. And I apologize to the people that have come for this one. I'm having a real struggle with Tab G. With, it's the last tab. I, all the facts that I've gotten have been very different. And I don't think, and I want to refer to Jennifer and to our attorney, if, how we go about getting more information. Is it doable? I don't know how the rest of the council feels. I'm having a really hard time on this one. And what I don't want to do is, I see how the staff recommended denial. What I don't want to do is say no to someone without having all the facts. So Jennifer, can I get your input?
Well, I mean, I mean, it's up to the council. If they feel like they need additional information, I'm happy to provide it. I obviously would need additional time and to know what additional information the council needs. So if you know what you need or if you feel like you need to have a conversation with me, we can certainly do that. I'm happy to do that. But we would need additional time.
Deb, do you have a question for Jennifer while she's up?
No, I had a comment.
Oh, please.
When you're finished.
Okay. And John, can you weigh in on this? Is there's more information you can give us so I can make a better decision?
Yeah, I mean, there are some things, I do think, at least from the legal side, I would say some additional time would be beneficial. There were some legal issues that were raised that I recently became aware of related to an equitable estoppel argument. We've been trying to obtain some of that data as it relates to wastewater. And that was done by a third-party subcontractor. And we haven't been able to get that information yet. So that's why I say from the legal standpoint, it'd be beneficial because I don't want to set a precedent by granting something with equitable estoppel if it shouldn't be. But I also don't want to deny something if there is a valid legal argument for it.
And I appreciate that. That's my concern. Go ahead, Deb, you want to say something?
Well, that, I actually, I was going to bring it up during the item because I thought that that's where it should be brought up. But if we withdraw it now, I don't have a problem. Is that, I saw that and I questioned it. And I remember some of those days of figuring EDUs and stuff. And yeah, I'd like to see my extra time on that, too.
So Don, do you want to say anything?
I just don't have a problem if that's what the preference is.
You guys okay with it? And John, is this where we move it to a definite time certain? Or how does this work?
It, so, under the code, the council can, by motion, can move it, continue it up to 180 days. In, if you are planning to move it to the next council meeting, I would say let's specify that tonight just because that would be sufficient in terms of, for legal notice. If it's going to be beyond the next council meeting, I don't think we need to specify the exact date now because we can re-advertise it.
So here's my question back to you. And first of all, I do apologize to the people who are here for that tab. But what I don't want to do is make a decision on something I'm not totally informed on. And that's sort of not fair to anybody. Could you guys provide us all with more information by September so we could do a time certain? I don't want to make them wait any longer than they have to. That would be a Jennifer and a John question.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the agenda date.
Because I know we got the budget.
It looks like it's September 11th.
11th.
Yeah.
11th, yeah.
I would think so. I would think we should be able, I mean, again, part of it is it's because the information's in the hand of a third-party subcontractor. So I would assume we would be able to get that information by then. We're talking about about a month and a half now at this point. I would assume we'd have that information at that point.
Go ahead, Deb.
If, if we find that we haven't got that information, is the council able to defer it a second time?
Yes, I think you could. Because the maximum you can continue it is 180 days.
Right.
So if you do it by 30, it doesn't mean, or I guess it's a little over 30 now. I don't think it means you can't do another continuance. I just think you can't exceed the 180.
Is that, I'd like to be fair to the people who are here. Is that agreeable? Is there a representative for Tab G? Is that fair?
Good evening, everyone. Yes, I am the attorney for, do you know, we are, if the council requires more time, we're obviously not going to object. But we certainly would not want to delay this matter 180 days.
I don't want to do that either.
This appeal was filed in June of last year. So we've been pending for over a year. And it's not a new argument, the estoppel argument. It's not a new argument. It's an argument that has been in the file since a year ago. So we understand. And obviously, we want the council to be as knowledgeable as possible. And obviously, we want to, we saw that it's beneficial to our clients. But 180 days, we do believe it's, it's too long. I understand that next month, the council won't meet. So.
It'd be September.
It would be September. So we would be amenable because of what you're requesting. But obviously, 180 days, it's far too long.
I don't think we're considering that. Mr. Horton, did you want to say something?
I just, it sounds to me like we need a motion. And in fairness, to be able to make this a great decision, a good decision, the right decision, I'd recommend a motion that we postpone it until time certain of September 11th. Is everybody okay with that?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And just for clarification, the motion, just because we need to include a couple more things for the notice. So it would be a motion to continue this matter until September 11th, 2025, at council meeting starting at 5:30 PM in this room at, what do we call this? Community center, sorry.
Where am I?
Okay, that's fine.
I'm still six hours ahead.
Isn't that what you said?
Exactly what he said. I just did it shorthand, but that's good.
And that's what I said.
Okay, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Okay, Vice Mayor Don Horton.
Yes.
Councilmember Deb Gillis.
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman.
Yes.
Councilmember Anna Richards.
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes. And again, I apologize. But I do not like making decisions if I don't have all the information.
And I appreciate that very much.
And I want to be fair.
No, I appreciate that very much to all the members of the council. And I brought my phone just, I want to make sure that I was available on September 11th, and I am.
Thank you very much.
So see you in two months. Thank you.
Okay. So I guess I was the last person. Mayor, council, communication? I got none, which is surprising. Village attorney, village manager.
I have, actually, it's a question of the council. So I was approached, the first quasi-judicial that you have today, which is Tab C in your book, is an administrative appeal. The question that was raised to me, so in an administrative appeal, you have an applicant, the applicant files for something, which is what happened here. And then, and then you have somebody who is challenging it and appeals it. Under the quasi-judicial procedures, the appellant is the applicant. So they get 10 minutes of time. The underlying applicant, the original applicant, so the person whose application is being appealed, asked if they could get 10 minutes of time. It is not addressed in our code. So our code just says "the applicant." But in an administrative appeal, the appellant is the applicant. So I wanted to pose that to the council as to whether you wanted to treat the underlying applicant as a member of the general public or if you would like to treat them as an applicant as well. And think, and thinking through this, this would apply to all administrative appeals. We would treat them all this way. It just, we haven't had this issue come up before, and it's not addressed in the code. And I didn't want to just make the legal call without, you know, posing it to you all as to what your preference might be. I think I could, I could go either way. So whatever the council's preference, I'm happy to deal, to do it either way.
Does anybody have an opinion? Or is anybody okay with it? What do you guys want to do? Wait, go ahead.
I'm okay with letting the original applicant have his time or their time to talk as well, yeah.
Deb, how do you feel? You guys all, I'm okay with the tab. Fair is fair.
All right, yeah, that's where, like I said, I just didn't want to.
Okay.
And so we will interpret it that way going forward. And I think that that's the interpretation towards where I was leading. But since it wasn't crystal clear in the code, I just didn't want to.
Well, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Ron, do you have anything?
Just one unrelated item. Next Tuesday, we're going to have another meeting of the Citizens Budget Review Task Force here in this room at 5:30. So that's July 29th. One of the members, Elizabeth Jolins, here. All of them are going to try to make it. So next Tuesday, 5:30, here in these, these form here, the Citizens Budget Review Task Force.
Go ahead.
Are they going to, are they just having a meeting? Or are they going to come up with another report? Because that was very interesting last, last time they were here, so.
I've asked to have certain specific items addressed. I've asked Mr. Quick to appear by Zoom. We're going to have discussion about legal fees, how we can have a better handle on that. I've asked Chief Abel to come in and discuss his budget request since it's a significant part of our budget. I'm going to ask our Public Works Director to come in and talk about overtime at the fills and also wastewater. So there's some specific things I want them to talk about. Then they can obviously talk about other things. I've had some calls from the public of people who want to come in and give input after they saw the first meeting. So it's going to be kind of an informal meeting. But we want to get as much input on the budget because we're going through the process. And we want to get that millage rate rolled back. We have to get some good input as far as where we can find some savings.
I think that, I think that's great. And I appreciate that. I, you know, we, I've been to many, many budget hearings. And the public is, it only seems like there's two or three people that would show up. We're getting some response now and some public coming. And I appreciate that. So I think this committee, this, this way we're doing this is working out good. So thank you.
It's July 29th, 5:30, right?
And you know there's another meeting that night. So I'll be at the other meeting, so.
Yeah, I understand there's a nearshore quality meeting. And unfortunately, with lobster mini-season, it kind of limited how many days we could meet next week. And I wanted to do the Budget Review Task Force before your budget hearings start August 5th. So we're kind of limited on what dates were available. And so unfortunately, it does have a little bit of a conflict. But I think the budget one will take quite a while. So you can probably try to make both.
Okay.
And that is classified as workshop, right?
5:30.
Workshop, right?
Yes. The Citizens Budget Review Task Force Workshop. It's a public session. They're not a committee. But they're still, I still have them meeting in the sunshine. We're going to notice the meeting. And it will be televised.
Okay, appreciate it. Okay.
That was July 29th at 5:30.
Okay. All right, I guess, Marnie, we're going to move on to public comment. And this is comment on anything with the exception of what we're talking about tonight, and that are tabs. So Marnie, who do you have?
I have a couple folks who have put it on an issue, but I don't believe it's on the agenda. So I'm going to call them during public comment. So we will start with Sandy Williams.
Good evening, council. Thank you again. My name's Sandy Williams. I live on Lower Maticumbi. And I am the designated beachwalker for Sea Oats Beach. And I'm back, back again because we still have not resolved the rock wall. The calendar or the map that the village has is the only map out of FWC, DEP, in coastal water, all of those that show that beach is not being a turtle nesting beach. I was hoping to get somebody from DEP to come with me tonight. But alas, I did not. So I just wanted you all to know that, from our perspective, there are a number of violations there. They built the rock wall with the intent of making their lot much larger, filling it in. And now they're going to get a permit. They are going to apply to get a permit to build a house there, which will definitely not enhance the turtle nesting. And we're having a bonanza year this year. We have the first time in 25 years, green turtles nesting on our beach. So we're very excited about that. So thank you all. I appreciate it. If you have any questions.
I have a question. John and Jennifer, or probably John, what can we do to find out if, A, I remember when you came here before. What can we do to find out if we have the accurate mapping for turtle beaches? Do we? And also, are these people in violation that are doing that? I don't know the answer. And she's back twice. So clearly, we need to address this. So, does anybody know?
Yeah, I mean, Jennifer's, remind chime in. I mean, it looks like Daniel's.
I was just going to say, Daniel's in the room.
Oh, I didn't see you, Daniel. You're hidden back there.
I was just going to say, we have a map. That is the official map. I guess Daniel can chime in as to.
Before you chime in, I've sent it to everybody, DEP, FWC, everybody. And they can't figure out, A, where you got the map and why you think that these two houses out of the whole beach should not be turtle nesting beaches because the turtles nesting there kind of prove that you're wrong.
Okay. Daniel, can you help us out, please?
Yes. So the, the way the state and local municipalities work is we get delegated authority to determine sea turtle nesting habitat. So that's why the maps are different between FWC, the state, different entities, local governments. We set our own map. The map we have was the original map from the county back in the 80s. And we just revised it slightly from them. The rock wall has been resolved. It's been brought into compliance with our code.
Yeah, excuse me. What they did was they made them take out the concrete. I know. The rock wall is still there.
I'm just, in terms of public, you have a three-minute public comment which has expired. And now there's questions being asked of.
Yeah, so you can. I just want to know if our map is correct. That's, that's what I'm looking for.
The, the map that's published online is the current, correct map.
Okay. Thank you.
May I ask Daniel a question? When's, when's the last time that map was updated? I heard you say we updated.
I believe it was late 2018.
Okay.
So it's recent, yes.
Fairly recent.
Okay. Go ahead.
Daniel, but you've amended that map multiple times since 2018 as well, right?
I believe three times.
Oh.
Three individual properties, though, not overall.
And was there a scientific method that came up with that map? Or was it just somebody guessing?
Right. So the original map from the county, which is the one that was adopted by council, says that everything bayside and oceanside of Lower Mat is turtle nesting, regardless of what's there. And then all of the oceanside of Upper Mat is turtle nesting, regardless of what's there.
That didn't answer my question.
Right.
Was there a scientific method used in order to come up with that?
So if there was permitted shoreline hardening that the state and federal government allowed, we determined that not to be turtle nesting beach since it was, it was granted hardening from the government.
You said "we," was that, you were part of that map that the county did back then?
I was not. It was adopted by council in, when the village became the village.
Okay.
I would think if she says she sees, seen turtles there, then it's our responsibility to have you dress as a turtle, go out there and hide and watch. Now, but we do need to, if she sees the turtles, we need to address that. Can I say anything else? Make it, make it very fast. I don't want to. Okay, there has, the definition of hardening of the beach has been.
Can you get it better on the mic, please?
The definition of hardening of the beach has been expounded upon. There were like a row of boulders. And now there's a rock wall. Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
All right, Daniel, if you could take a look at that area again. I hate, you know, if you would, please, just because.
We'll, we'll take a close look.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Marnie?
Up next is Henry Danzig.
Is Henry here?
He was in the back earlier.
I saw him.
He was outside.
He's outside.
He's outside? Can we move to the next one and then call him again?
Next speaker is Joe Wishmeyer.
Sorry. I'm used to.
Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. Mayor and council, again, I would like to express my gratitude to our village manager for creating a citizen advisory group to involve all the citizens to review the budget. Even though every council member attended the workshop, whether in person or online, and heard concerns about the inflated budget, still voted to start the millage rate at 3.0. I don't understand. As I stated at the budget workshop, 2020 to 2021, our total budget was $35.8 million. Last year, it was $60.7 million, even though property values have risen by $560 million just in the last year alone, leaving Isla Marada taxpayers to pay even double the amount of the Marathon residents. Why is this? Many of you during your campaigns expressed concern for the environment and water quality. Councilman Friedman introduced a resolution opposing alligator alcatraz, and not one of you even seconded his motion. His resolution pointed out environmental and pollution concerns. Yet the four of you chose to make it political. Shame on you. You should pay attention to the people who make a living on our fragile backcountry waters and see firsthand the damage created by projects, including the Everglades. Just when I thought that I could not become any more disgusted, our Public Works Director got up and outlined a change to the village's responsibility in the case of sewer backups. Homeowners had always had a responsibility for repairs to lines on their property. To now imply that the village maintains their lines, but sometimes there are breaks. Even though the Public Works Director says that a backup may occur in a house due to a village issue, the homeowner would still be held responsible because the malfunction was not neglect. How could you in good conscience do that to the people who elected you? Oh, well, we'll just send out a flyer. Only Deb Gillis seemed concerned enough to question this policy and vote no, while others, some even made light of the situation by saying, well, do you want to take it outside? On such an important issue, this is unacceptable. Your actions have consequences. And hopefully, people will remember on the next elections. Thank you.
Marnie, who's next, please?
Is Mr. Danzig in? Yes.
Is Henry in the room?
I checked outside also.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Next up is Bart Smith.
Yes, Bart Smith. On behalf of What a Good Catch, it's been a while. Good to see you all. So what Brett's passing out is a couple documents. And I'll, I'll wait till he gets done with it. But a couple years ago, a resolution was passed for What a Good Catch, Resolution 230445. And it was based on an appeal that we had filed on behalf of What a Good Catch. And we, we made a request to overturn the denial and had specific criteria that we would then agree to, which was that the hammock be placed under conservation easement and the applicant further enhance the hammock through certified biologists approved by the village biologist. The minutes reflect that when, it's in blue, little tab, that Mark Rag, when he proffered it, he suggested approval of the conditions proffered by the applicant. Well, then the resolution was passed. It wasn't, I didn't get a copy of it till much later. There was three conditions, which were, the first three were the three that were proffered. And a fourth condition was added that basically is keeping us to the stock plans that were put in B pass. We've requested that this be corrected. We've been informed that the, you know, there's a couple different ways to do it. But the, we feel the simplistic way is to put, to get it on the next agenda as an actual item. We can walk through what we're looking for on an agenda item and potentially correct this and hopefully be able to move forward with a home for the clients. And so we're asking that you just add, direct staff to place an agenda item to discuss the fourth condition of the resolution that I provided to you, which is Resolution 2304-45. Thank you. And if you have any questions.
One second. John, do, if, he wants to try to get us to, you know, I think there's two parts to a motion. First, we have to waive what happened on the last council. Am I correct?
You'd waive your procedures to allow you to, to consider it at a future meeting. We couldn't consider it today. It's a quasi-judicial.
I understand. And then there'd be a motion to move it to September, correct?
Yes. If you wanted to direct it for September, we could do it. But it would be a, it would be a quasi-judicial, so yes.
Correct. So my question now is, can we do that now? Should we address this later and see how the rest of the council feels about hearing this again? When does, when do we make that decision? I guess, is what I'm asking.
My recommendation is, would be for us to get through public comment.
Okay.
And then if you want to do it after public comment, then we can do it then at that point.
Okay.
Before we get into all the other stuff.
Got it. Is that okay with you?
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Okay, Marnie?
Okay, on Zoom, we have Matthew Baron. Okay, Matthew, go ahead. You've got three minutes. Are you there? We can't hear you. It looks like you're mute.
Sorry, I don't have anything to add. I'm just, I'm just here to listen. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Sorry, I saw the raised hand. Thank you.
Marnie, is there anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I guess public comment is now closed, so I guess we move to, John, I guess I'm looking for a motion to waive the last, the first of the two, whatever I said. I don't remember now.
Yeah, it would be a motion to waive the council procedures to, excuse me, to allow for additional consideration of Resolution Number 23-04-45.
And that is totally because of the amount of time that has gone by, correct?
Correct.
Right there? You know, see, I'm learning. So, council, does anybody have any questions they'd like to ask Mr. Smith? Or do I have a motion to... Steve, any questions?
No, I just, I'm concerned because of what just happened earlier with Gino. He's been waiting for a year to get this on the agenda. We're delaying him. Mr. Smith comes in, asks us to put it on the next agenda. It just, it just seems a little awkward to me.
Anna, do you have anything to say?
No.
Deb? Don?
No, I think that the postponement for Mr. Gino was so that we could gather additional information and be able to give him a really fair and knowledgeable impartial hearing, which I think was the absolute best thing for him, rather than rushing through, looking at staff's report, and just relying on that. If there's additional information, I think we need to hear that, because it's real easy to look at a staff report, staff recommends denial, and we just deny that. So, I think as much information as we can glean between now and then is, may be or may not be helpful to Mr. Gino. I think that what Bart's asking for is that, for whatever reason, that they're looking at a condition that was placed by a previous planning director that they're saying wasn't really part of the hearing, and it was a misinterpretation. It's not in the minutes that way, so they would like for us to be able to revisit that. And I think that's fair for the applicant, too. So, I'd make a motion to those things.
Do you want to say anything before?
Yeah, I was just gonna add is that this was brought to my attention a while back, and I did some research on it, and I think it's worth rehearing. I think there was some confusion that night.
I was there. It was confusing.
Yes, you were there.
It was confusing.
And I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, and I don't mean this offensive at all, but I'm not sure everybody understood what they were actually voting.
Wouldn't be the first time. Understand?
We all do it. It all happens. So, anyway.
All right, do I have a motion then?
Ma'am, I'd make that motion that we waive the procedures, and we're able to rehear, and we discuss that on the next...
Let's hold off on the date, just because I want to get some clarification first.
Very good. Okay.
That's fine. Do you want to have a second?
I'll second it.
Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Anna Richards?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And motion passes five to zero.
Okay, now we move to the second part, which is, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to get clarification from the applicant that, so it's my, as I understand it, based on the motion, it's going to be a rehearing under the original application. I just wanted to confirm that with the applicant, because if it's going to be anything different, then that changes the date we could hear it. It also potentially changes whether a new application fee would be required.
We just wanted to just re-discuss the fourth point. We're comfortable with the resolution as to the first three conditions. It was the fourth condition as to the stock plans, and so, within the confines of everything, just the fourth condition.
It's all under the original application, so no issue with the September date. I just, sorry to split that up.
That's fine. It needs to be, we need to be clear about it. I think that maybe is why the first issue happened. So, September 11th is what I would move that to be on.
Okay, so it would be a motion to place this on the agenda September 11th at the Land Use Council meeting at 5:30 PM here in this room at the community center.
To specifically hear that fourth item.
Yep.
Okay, that's my motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. Ms. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Anna Richards?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's good seeing you, Neil.
Thank you very much.
Five seconds going on, Bart.
Okay, so, public comment's been closed. I guess we're moving to Tab A. John, if you would, please? We gotta snap out of vacation mode now.
Tab A is an ordinance of Alamoata Village of Islands, Florida, amending Policy 1-3.1.3, institute a program for transfer of development rights of the Alamoata Comprehensive Plan by amending procedures and eligibility criteria for the transfer of development rights, providing for the transmittal of this ordinance to the State Department of Commerce, providing for separability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date upon approval of this ordinance by the State Department of Commerce.
Okay, I believe Jennifer?
Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, thanks. So, this evening, we have two ordinances. Are we going to do them together or separately? I should have asked that before you put your papers away.
Since these are not quasi judicial, let's do them separately, even though they're companions.
Okay, so, we have, I'm going to talk about them together, because they're basically the same thing, but they're separate items. So, we have two companion ordinances. One is to change the Comprehensive Plan Policy 1-3.1.3, Institute a Program for Transfer of Development Rights, and that's what we're talking about right now. So, basically, Policy 1.3-1.1 is our, regulates our transfer of development rights policy. Recently, and I say recently, we're talking now probably a year and a half to two years ago, the village council had directed staff to look at the types of transfers. When I say types of transfers, the land use types of transfers, whether it be residential and commercial, and then the different habitats that you could transfer to. And funny enough, the What a Good Catch project was one of the instigators for the request of looking at the TDR ordinance, because that property, the reason there were so many conditions related to habitat was, it was a property that was unique in that it had several different classifications of habitat on it. And so, the reason that they had to come for an appeal was, we couldn't as staff approve a straight for a TDR, even though they were constructing within the scarified area of the lot. Because of the way our code is written, you have to go from light to light. And I'm getting probably too into the weeds, and Daniel's here to speak more about the changes we made to the habitat stuff, so I'll let him deal with that. I just wanted to talk a little bit about why this is important. So, it's important to make these mechanisms available to allow people with, to utilize their existing development rights. We have to remember, these are existing development rights that people have on their property. This is not new development. These are existing development rights, so we're allowing people to utilize those existing rights. This is also important moving forward, as the village has few, if any, B-Pass allocations left, and people would be looking to utilize these to help maybe take some relief from the B-Pass list, which will aid the village in some of those issues as well. So, that's one of the reasons we're looking to do this as well. So, what we've done as far as the land use goes, in our current ordinance and code, there's a chart that says, if you're in this zoning district, you can only transfer to these zoning districts. We got rid of that chart completely, and we basically said, if you have a residential TDR, if it was existing residential, you can transfer to any district that allows a residential use. If you have a commercial, well, commercial's separate. So, it's basically residential for residential. And then, we also removed the restriction that you can't transfer into a V-zone, which you may recall, we just did that with the affordable housing. So, this also just makes that consistent with the previous ordinance that we just did as well, for the same reasons, you know, that we require stricter development standards. We have floodplain management standards and things like that in a V-zone. So, those are the two general land use items that we've done for this, and I'll let Daniel speak to the habitat, which is a little bit more in-depth, so.
Good evening, council. So, the way the current TDR ordinance is written is that you have to, when you do a transfer, the receiver site has to be less environmentally sensitive than the sender site as a whole. It doesn't allow us to look at areas that are going to be built or anything else. So, in order to make the TDR ordinance more flexible, we incorporated some flexibility that allows a sender site to send the development right to a receiver site that has an area that is less sensitive than the sender site. So, if you're transferring, say, from a hammock lot, you're able to build a house in a scarified area, even if it has hammock in the back. So, it's more flexible that way, but in order to make it more flexible, we left the same protections for the environment in. We didn't relieve any of the current environmental regulations, and we clarified that by saying Class 1 habitat, which is your high-quality hammock, undisturbed wetlands, beach berm, that cannot be disturbed during the transfer and during the construction. So, you're able to transfer, but the high-quality stuff has to stay where it is, and that's how we made it more flexible.
And then the only, just thing I wanted to add is that on June 3rd, the LPA reviewed this and unanimously recommended approval of the ordinance.
Okay, before Daniel, you leave, anybody have a question for Daniel before he goes away? No? Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so, council, do you want to have a discussion? You want to do public comment? Does anybody have anything?
Let's have public comment.
Okay. Marnie, has anybody signed up?
Yes, ma'am. First up, we have Ty Harris.
Good evening, council. Ty Harris, 110 Plantation Shores Drive on beautiful Plantation Key. The staff has been working on some version of this ordinance since 2018. But we knew even before then that we were never going to have enough building rights to accommodate all the vacant properties. And so, we're now at the stage where I would call looking for change under the cushions of the couch. We're trying to find existing building rights that can be transferred without causing any type of environmental issues, so that we get at least a little bit closer to having the number of allocations we need to provide for the folks that would still want to build here. I mean, we know that now that Senate Bill 180 has been passed, that our last moratorium is probably going to come off the books, so we expect that more people are going to get into B-Pass, which just is going to make the problem worse. So, we have a fiduciary responsibility to protect our tax base and our tax funds. And the fewer, the less we're exposed to takings cases because we can't provide these building rights, the better off we are. So, that's why this is so important. This is basically found money, because essentially, you're taking development rights that are coming from mostly Lower Matta Combe. When there was a couple condos that were destroyed after, in 2017 during Irma, they built back as two-unit townhomes. So, there's still eight units that could have been built back on Lower Matt in one spot, and in another spot, it was eight, and two were built back. So, those are, those are units that are still out there that the demand is now in single-family. It's not to do another multifamily project. If I was to come here and ask to do a 20-unit townhome project, there would be a ton of people here standing saying, "We don't want that kind of density." What you're talking about are infill lots in Indian Keys, Venetian Shores. Those are the types of lots that are looking for a water, you know, wet allocation to purchase. They would much rather purchase one than get into B-Pass or potentially end up in a lawsuit in five years with the village. So, those are my comments, and I urge you to pass this ordinance as drafted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next, Marnie?
Next is Sue Miller.
Sue Miller, Lower Matta Combe.
Hit your mic on, there you go.
Sue Miller, Lower Matta Combe, a difference of opinion. I'll be representing the Alamoata Community Alliance. In just a few weeks, we'll be seeing a draft for the amendments to our comp plan by Able City East. Probably one of the most significant areas that needs to be addressed is the TDR ordinance. 20 years ago, we were all baffled as to the long-term impact we might see from this innovative process as our planners put together TDR regulations that include the ability to transfer development rights and density from one location to another. It's been used sparingly so far, because TDRs have proven to be expensive compared to waiting in line for B-Pass allocations. As B-Pass allocations became more limited and the wait to get them longer, the TDR process started looking better, at least for some. Now, we can look ahead and see a time when there may be no more market-rate B-Pass allocations, and TDRs will be the only way to get a permit to build a market-rate home. And now, we recognize there are rewards that TDRs have over B-Pass allocations in our current code. Using TDRs can increase the allowable density in some zoning classifications. They can be used to transfer residential development rights to mixed-use commercial properties, so that a single-family home built in the right zoning that doesn't allow vacation rentals can be transferred to a zoning that does. And thus, a small residential, single-family home can become a huge four, five, six-bedroom vacation rental. This change in the TDR process may be a boon to developers converting small homes to huge vacation rentals, high resale value, and huge income producers. But, is that really what we want? That will require more services, more infrastructure, and create more traffic. Originally, TDRs were to reduce the potential for takings liabilities. They only allowed transfers to vacant property. Residential-only TDRs must be to residential-only zoning, not mixed use. The zoning, the V-zone should be protected. We should not be trying to transfer to a V-zone. We need to study the long-term impact of our TDR ordinance on our infrastructure and on our environment before we make changes like those proposed tonight. We are in an area of critical concern. We cannot continue to support more and bigger without careful studies of the real impact on our community. The very nature of the TDR ordinance as it exists encourages the demolition of our smallest, most affordable homes and mobile homes to create even more McMansions. You all talk about the severe challenge of providing workforce housing. The TDR ordinance as it exists today has developers seeking out the small, most affordable homes to replace them with mansions, often for high rental income. This change tonight would make it drastically worse. Please do not do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Marnie, anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Wishmeyer?
Yes, Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. It's hard to follow that up, because most everything she said is what I was going to come up here to say. You know, starting with Able City East, you hired a professional company to come in and redo our comp plan and LDRs. And I don't understand why this council is so determined to move ahead so quickly and try to change everything. Because what happens then when Able City comes out with their plan? What if it, what if it's different than what you're agreeing to now? Are we going to have lawsuits? Are we going to have more takes? I think it's going to create more and more problems. So, other than the developers trying to get in before any restrictions get tougher and so that they can make more money, I don't think that you should really be considering these options until, it's not going to be that much longer now. And originally, it took years and years and years to develop this comp plan. So, I'm hoping that this council, just with a stroke of a vote, can outdo stuff that has been in place for years and years, and it has worked. By the same token, when you buy a piece of property, you know what it is, and every time people come and they just keep trying to change, say, "Well, you know, I bought a car, but I want more extras on it." So, I'm going to go back to the dealer and say, "Well, you need to put them on." It doesn't work that way. So, please vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Marnie.
There's no one else. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, input? Don?
No, I actually, looking at this, one thing that really helps me know that this is the right thing, that, you know, that it's really been done right, is that not only... only did our professional staff look at this, but they also had Rebecca Jutan as their village consulting working on this.
I saw that.
I can tell.
I said I saw that, too.
Yeah, you saw that. And Rebecca Jutan, of course, was the director of the South Florida and Green Swamp Department of Community Affairs back then, which is the state agency that's big brother that watches us. So she certainly understands the rules and knows the rules very well. Additionally, these are existing rights. They can go from point A to point B. It's not an increase in density or intensity because these dwelling rights have already been counted. As far as the plus-one, or as far as the flood zone moving to a V-zone, you know, one of the changes that recently was made in the Florida Building Code was requiring that all structures be placed a minimum of one foot above the base flood elevations. So you even further lessen the effect on what's going to happen in residential units that are built in the V-zone. So I don't see a problem with that. So I think staff's done their homework. I can tell you that a comment made about this being done so quickly, I know this has been kicked around for, well, before Jennifer, before the last previous planning director, before Ty was the planning director. This was something that has been being worked on. It seemed like we had a couple of village managers that redirected staff to not do this ordinance or concentrate on other things and not worry about this. That fly is driving you crazy, isn't it?
It certainly is.
So I think that staff's done the right thing, and I think it's a good code, a good part of the code to change. And I've quite honestly had a discussion with this with our consultants while they were here with our visit for the comp plan. I think they recognize that something like this does also take the strain off of the BPAS queue. It takes the strain off of the village as far as the potential for takings claim once we're out again. So that's where I sit on this one.
Thank you, Don. Who's next? Anna?
No. I think Don just summed it right up.
Okay, that was easy for you, and I won that. Steve?
I guess I'm just a little bit hesitant because I prefer to let the comp plan work this out so we don't have to do changes then. I think that's one of the reasons why we hired him, so we can have kind of this seamless transition.
Deb?
I've seen this subject several times over the years, and Don, you did sum it up very nicely, that it will help, it won't solve, but it will help take the pressure off of some of the takings and the fact that we don't have, and they were counted, these are all units that were counted. As for waiting on the comp plan, is, the comp plan is being actually directed by us. So if this is where we think we should go, it may need a few word tweaks or whatever, or some of the stuff that relates to this may have to be changed. But as we approve stuff going from now until we get that comp plan review, Able City can insert our thoughts into it, and that section is, I don't want to say done, but done.
Hit your little button.
So I support this.
It's funny that Mr. Giovinetta and his son are here because I remember having this discussion with the council sitting when Dante had won the national championship for Greco wrestling. So it at least goes back that far, Dante. That's all, I'll tell you that.
Well, you know, Able City's in constant contact with us. It's not like we told them to do the comp plan and they vanished. And something like a comp plan that hasn't been done in 20, 25 years or something, 20 years, isn't going to be done overnight. We can't just freeze the community and wait for the comp plan. And when we make changes, they're aware of it. They incorporate, this fly, and I are going to go around. Yeah, I know he does. We communicate with them so they know everything, the changes we're making. So this isn't a surprise, and it will take the burden off of lawsuits. And Rebecca Jutan is like the guru, and when she approves it, it's pretty hard to look the other way. So, having said that, anybody else have anything? John, a question. Since these are two separate tabs, do we vote on them individually?
Yeah, actually, we'd only called one anyway. And so, but they will be voted on separately.
Never mind. Do I have a motion from council? Is there any other comment?
You ready for the motion? I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Anna Richards?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
The motion passes 5-0.
Okay. John?
Tab B.
Tab B is also an ordinance of first reading. It's an ordinance of Alamo Rata Village of Islands, Florida, amending Village Code, Sections 30-504, Transfer Procedure, and 30-506, Transfer of Development Rights for Residential Dwelling Units and Density, to amend procedures and eligibility criteria for the transfer of development rights, TDRs, providing for the transmittal of this ordinance to the State Department of Commerce, providing for separability, providing for conflicts, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date upon approval of this ordinance by the State Department of Commerce.
I don't have anything additional to add.
Oh, come on.
It's the same presentation, so I'm here if you have any additional questions.
You guys good with public comment first? Go ahead. Marnie?
Yes, we have Sue Miller.
Are you doing five minutes?
No, I don't need. Sue Miller, Lower Matacombe, I need about two seconds. I reiterate that originally, the TDR ordinance required that you transfer to a vacant lot. That's been removed. So the takings issue is we're trying to get as many properties that are vacant built on so that you don't have a takings lawsuit. So I don't know how you think that this will improve takings or decrease takings. I think it will not do as well as it could if you only transfer to vacant.
Thank you. Marnie?
Joe Wishmeyer.
I almost was going to say, Joe, you're next. Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. I, too, will make this rather quick, especially towards the last comment on allowing stuff in a V-zone. Now, being from down here, we don't use the H-word. So we're just going to call it maybe a storm. So let's tell all those people on the ocean side, "Oh, well, you only have to build one foot above." Do you think that Snappers and all those other places that got wiped out, the Islander, one foot was going to make that much of a difference? I think that you're opening up a big can of worms, especially allowing projects to go on in a V-zone, and you really ought to reconsider that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Marnie, anybody else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Counsel, thoughts? Don, you're ready to go, it looks like.
Well, I'd just say, as a certified floodplain manager and somebody that was the floodplain manager for Alamo Rata and for the county, I can tell you that one foot above base flood elevation matters a lot because FEMA's already set the flood elevations. And Snappers was built long before we had flood elevation requirements, and many of these houses that are being damaged in hurricanes, if they're substantially damaged, do have to be elevated to the current flood elevation. Flood elevations have changed three times since 1985, and they've become more restrictive each time. And we still have a pending map that's going to make some things even that much more restrictive. And I think that's why the state adopted that in the latest Florida Building Code, to require what we call in the trade freeboard, or one foot above the base flood elevation, because it continues to lessen the hazards and the mitigation and the damage in the event of hurricanes. So things don't get easier, they get harder, and, which is better for those structures. That's all I got to say.
Anna, anything?
It was actually four times since 1985. Four different flood maps, but yeah. And V-zone, it goes to the bottom of the beam, not just the floor. And after Hurricane Irma, we actually checked a lot of those places, and most of them, if they'd built to flood, wouldn't have flooded. So makes a difference.
Steve, do you have anything? Deb? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Anna Richards?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
The motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Moving on to Tab C. John, this is the quasi-judicial part?
Yes, it is. I get to read my, this is the John Quick portion of the show here. I get to read my statement.
Take it away, John.
We are now into the quasi-judicial. Please be advised that the following agenda items are quasi-judicial in nature. If you wish to comment upon these items, please inform the village clerk by filling out the available sign-up form. An opportunity for persons to speak on each item will be made available after the applicant and staff have made their presentations on each item. As a reminder, testimony in quasi-judicial matters must be in person; Zoom testimony is not permitted. These proceedings will be handled in accordance with the Village Code requirements. All testimony, including public testimony and evidence, will be made under oath or affirmation. Additionally, each person who gives testimony may be subject to cross-examination. If you do not wish to be either cross-examined or sworn, your testimony shall be disregarded. The general public will not be permitted to cross-examine witnesses, but the public may request the council to ask questions of staff or witnesses on their behalf. The full agenda packet on each item is hereby entered into the record along with Village Code and Comprehensive Plan. Any correspondence that was received by the village staff is included in the file and part of the record. Persons representing organizations must present evidence of their authority to speak for the organization. Further details of the quasi-judicial procedures in Section 30-256 of the Village Code may be obtained from the village clerk. Tonight, there are four quasi-judicial items. There are Tabs C, D, E, and F. If you recall, Tab G was continued. At this time, I would like to ask anyone who intends to speak on the quasi-judicial items to please raise your hand and be sworn in by the clerk.
In the matter in which you are about to give testimony, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? The witnesses have been sworn.
Madam Mayor, the first is Tab C, which is a resolution of the Village Council of Alamo Rata Village of Islands, Florida, considering the administrative appeal, number PLCUP 202250012, filed by Russell A. Yeagle, Agent for Lower Matacombe Beach Properties Owners Association, appellant relating to an administrative decision by the Director of Planning Amendment to Minor Conditional Use Permit for property located at 73501 Overseas Highway, having real estate number 00388620-000000 on Lower Matacombe Key as legally described herein, providing for the transmittal of this resolution to the State Department of Commerce and providing for an effective date upon the approval of this resolution from the State Department of Commerce. Counsel, before we begin, I'd like for you to please disclose any ex parte communications you may have had with the applicant or anyone else. Again, this is Tab C, and please include whether the person represented any group or entity, as well as the subject matter, as you recall. Thank you.
Deb? Mike? That's okay.
I spoke with Lori Manning. She's just a citizen. And I spoke with Ty Harris, and he's representing the association. And I spoke with Robert Mosher, and he's part of that.
Don?
I was trying to go through my notes because I talked to, so skip with me. Let me, I want to try not to miss anybody, but I've spoken to quite.
Well, I kind of have spoke to the Lori Manning today, but then we lost signal on the phone. And then I think Robert Mosher had left me a message, but I never talked to him. And then there's been a whole bunch of emails.
Steve?
None.
You ready?
So I've talked to Ty, of course. The mayor of Dillon's. I've spoken to, I've spoken to Robert Mosher a couple of times, and miscellaneous other folks that were quick conversations, and lots of emails.
Lots of emails, Ty, Robert. So we're good. So Jennifer, is this you or Emily here?
So Emily is ill, so I will be presenting on her behalf.
Okay. Ready when you are.
Thank you. So back this past January, Calusa SMIL LLC and its agent Ty Harris submitted an application for a minor deviation to amend the conditions imposed by minor conditional use for the former location of the Safari Lounge located at 75301 Overseas Highway. That original conditional use permit was for outdoor seating. On March 3rd, 2025, the village mailed notices to property owners within 300 feet informing them of the director's intent to issue a minor conditional use permit with the amendments as proposed, having determined that the project has met all the requirements for said approval. The amendments to the conditions included removing the following conditions. One, that the operating hours for the seating customers of the Safari Lounge will be Sunday through Thursday, 11 to 9, and Friday and Saturday from 11 to 10. Two, that the Safari Lounge shall not play amplified music on the veranda at any time. And three, that there shall be no live music at the Safari Lounge. A condition restricting all special events and/or parties from being hosted at and/or operated by the Safari Lounge was to be amended to restrict such events and/or parties to a maximum of 12 per calendar year. On or about March 19th, 2025, the Planning Development Services Department received a request for a public hearing from Russell A. Yeagle on behalf of the adjacent property owners and/or their homeowners association, the Lower Matacombe Beach Property Owners Association. Pursuant to the Village Code ordinances, the public hearing before the village council was scheduled, the adjacent property owners were notified, the hearing was properly advertised, and the property was posted. This portion of the property where the restaurant is located is approximately 24,671 square feet in size. The property is zoned towards commercial and is within the mixed-use form. The location of the restaurant is on the south, or the property is on the south side of Overseas Highway, and the restaurant is located in the southwestern tip of Calusa Cove Marina property, abutting the edge of the Calusa Cove Resort to the north and to the east, and open water shoreline to the south. This use is a permitted use in the tourist commercial district. The full analysis is in your packet. I'm not going to read the entire thing. I just wanted to point out that conditional uses are generally those uses compatible with other uses permitted in the zoning district, but that require individual review of their location, design, configuration, and intensity and density of use, and the structures that may require the imposition of conditions pertinent thereto to ensure the appropriateness and compatibility of the use at a particular location. And that the council at the public hearing shall consider testimony given at the hearing, and if at any time during the public hearing, the village council determines that the application is based on incomplete or inaccurate information or misstatements of fact, you may deny the application or refer back to the director for further review. At the close of the public hearing, the council, by not less than a majority of acquirers, shall either approve, approve with conditions, or deny the application by resolution based on the standards of the chapter. And again, I've laid out, or Emily laid out the standards of the chapter in your packet for you. I would note that the proposed, the staff has felt that the proposed minor deviation from the major conditional use is consistent with policies in our comprehensive plan, as noted in the packet. Restaurant lounge has existed in the same location for decades without conditions that were placed on the new restaurant lounge. The project is compatible with the surrounding commercial uses and will not negatively impact level of service standards. The proposed conditional use complies with all relevant and appropriate portions of the LDRs. The proposed minor deviation is compatible and consistent with the uses and character of the land surrounding and in the vicinity of the land proposed for the development. The historic location of the restaurant remains unchanged. Intensity has been addressed by imposing a condition that limits the amount of special events and/or parties held at the restaurant operator to 12 per calendar year. The proposed minor deviation does not entail the further development of any part of the property. And the proposed conditional use minimizes environmental impacts, including but not limited to water, air, stormwater management, wildlife, vegetation, and wetlands, and the natural functioning of the environment, as there are no environmentally sensitive habitats on the property that will be disturbed because there is no additional development. And that at this time, the staff recommends the request for the minor deviation on conditional use be approved, with the remaining conditions from the previous conditional use be intact. That leaves eight conditions being remained, and they're listed in your packet as well. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, anybody has a question for Jennifer before we start? No?
I don't have any questions, but I did fill out my list. I feel like I'm at an awards ceremony, but I want to make sure that I'm on the record. Jimmy Ryan, and Pasta and Angie, and Lori Manning, and Paul Gaber, and Nikki Hefty.
Should I stop the music, ma'am?
So I really did keep track of them. Thank you.
My thank you. So anybody have anything for Jennifer? No? Okay, thank you, Jennifer. So we're going to start with the attorneys? Mr. Yeagle, would you like to come up, please?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Russell Yeagle, Herschel Flupino and Yeagle.
I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the Lower Matocumbi Beach Property Owners Association. I heard reference to the number of emails. I've seen emails that are disparaging, suggesting my client is against all change, and they're really not worth dignifying. This isn't a popularity contest. This is about following the code, and what we believe will demonstrate is the code has not been followed. And secondarily, any concept that they're against growth or change was borne out last month when you gave a major conditional use approval with Toboder's World that my client cooperated with. So let's start on neutral. Let's forget about emails. Let's forget about disparaging remarks. Let's look at the facts. So we have three things that we say are wrong. First, this process was not the correct process. The code does not allow a minor deviation in these circumstances. Second, the code imposes a burden on the applicant, and the burden has not been carried. And third, one of the reliefs it's asking, or the things it says, "Give me," we maintain the council doesn't have the legal authority to give. So now we go to the exciting part. We start reading code. So Section 3216 of the code says, "The director may approve minor deviations. Authorized minor deviations are those that allow minor redesign or change to a project that would not substantially change or increase the anticipated impacts. Most importantly, minor deviations by the director shall be limited to the following." Now, I'm not going to bore you and go through these, but if you pull up the code, I can tell you, there's only one. There's only one possible one that this could have passed under. Redesign or change in use where there's no increase in traffic impact. That's it. None of the others even remotely apply. So first question is, or first problem is, they're saying, "Remove conditions. Conditions are not uses." So the reality is, she cannot use this process to remove conditions. She can only do changes if it fits into this hole. And this hole says you have to show there'll be no increase in traffic impact. Has the applicant showed that? Did they submit a traffic study? No. And in this case, that's particularly important. Why is it important? Because last month, we gave a major conditional use approval to operate a boat dealership on the property. And the initial conditional use approval here occurred before that boat dealership was on the property. It's been on the property for over two years, even though it just got the approval. So we have no traffic impact study, so we can't fit into that hole. We cannot use this to say, "Oh, you know what? The director can give a minor deviation approval." The other problem with it, like I said, is it's limited to use. Can't remove conditions. So what use is at issue here? There's only one possible use that we could, she could look at, and the use is events. That's it. And you say, "Mr. Yeagle, you, you, events are used?" Well, of course, I know they're used, because in the temporary uses section, it says if the use is an event. So, and what we'll discuss in a little bit, you can't change that one. You can't grant them the relief they want, because events are uses, and the tourist commercial code sections say, "These are the uses you're allowed," and it doesn't say events. The only authority for hosting events is in the temporary uses section. So the simple truth is, we can't get to where we're at today via this process, because it does not fit to any, into any of those categories. So it's not a minor deviation. And if we treat it as a minor deviation, at best, the best we could do would be to remove the prohibition as a use or against a use. So what's the second problem? Well, there's a really, really important code provision that applies here. Before any conditional use is amended, extended, varied, or altered, the applicant shall demonstrate that a change of circumstances or conditions has occurred which make it necessary to amend, extend, vary, or alter the conditional use. So that is a burden on the applicant. That is not a burden on the neighbors to say they didn't, they have to do this. So let's look at the application. Let's see what the change in circumstances is. These conditions limit hours of operation, music, and events. Safari Lounge and restaurant has been in operation for over 30 years, with no history of noise complaints. These conditions have made operation of the restaurant untenable, and the owner has closed the restaurant as a result. So a change in conditions would be something that occurred after the conditional use was granted. That's no change in conditions. This explanation seems to be, "Well, you know what? You guys gave us extra seating, but you didn't let us play music, and we went out of business because of it." That's not a change in circumstances. A change in circumstances may have been, the surrounding community said, "We're okay with removing these prohibitions." So by virtue of your own code, they carry a burden. You gave them a conditional use approval, and they carry a burden of demonstrating there's been a change in circumstances since they received that approval that would justify a change. They felt very far sure, they didn't even offer you a change in circumstances. They just said, "No noise complaints." Well, yeah, that's probably true, because the Safari Lounge didn't have outdoor seating until you gave them a conditional use approval in 2023, and therefore they had no outdoor music, and you didn't have to worry about anybody having noise complaints. So that's kind of common sense. But the real question is, what did they give you to say there's a change in circumstances? Are they saying, "We went out of business? That's the change in circumstances?" Well, they went out of business because you gave them additional seating? It's nonsensical. There is no logic to that. So they have failed horribly on that burden that they must carry with them as well. I'm making better time than I thought. So assuming for the sake of argument that the applicant has met this threshold, which it hasn't, council cannot grant the requested relief for multiple reasons. As I told you, the amendment seeks to authorize special events, right? Well, this is a conditional use approval. Nowhere in the code does it say, in the tourist commercial district, you can host special events. The only place in this code is governed by the temporary use section that says, "This is when you can hold special events." So what they're asking you to do is effectively override your code and say, "You can do something the code says you can't do." But guess what? For you to do that, you have to have it as a use that's allowed in the zoning district, and it's not a use that's allowed in the zoning district. They're asking you to just completely disregard your code. Say, "You guys can do 12. Don't worry about that other second. Do 12 special events." We don't even know where those events are going to occur. Are those events going to be confined to the veranda and inside of the building? So the simple truth is, you can't grant them that request. You simply do not have the authority. The proposal, the proposed alteration also creates another problem, because in the original approval, when you add the square footage, we exceed 3,000 square feet. If you read it, do the math. 3,000 square feet is a major conditional use approval. The other problem is, the code provides for outdoor seating, that if it butts a residential area, that you, you, the council must approve it. It was not approved, to my understanding, the last time by the council. So we have these violations of code. So we're here today saying, "You know what? Give us 3,000, in excess of 3,000 square feet. Do it, do a minor deviation process. Council doesn't need to worry about it. Code doesn't say that, doesn't say it at all." We maintain the contrary with staff, and we have the utmost respect for staff, that it violates Comp Plan Policy 1-2.41. One of those says, "Restrict the scale and intensity of commercial development outside of village activity centers and other appropriate areas in the village." This proposed change increases the scale, outdoor seating, special events potentially on the beach, at least that's what we're being told, which has raised significant issues, and the intensity of the development and violation of that section. It says, the same policy says, "Avoid encroachment of incompatible commercial activity into established residential area. The requested changes allow commercial activity, outdoor amplified music, which were not historically present on this property." So let's do it. Safari Lounge never had outdoor seating and outdoor music. So that is an encroachment upon the residential community. And they acknowledged this by agreeing to these limitations last time. Violates Comp Plan Policy 1-2.43. It says, "Commercial use is located outside of village activity centers. Redevelopment shall be encouraged for commercial structures and uses designated MU and located outside village activity centers, but only to the extent that impacts generated by the new structure and use are equal to or less than that generated by the previous structure and use." Well, the previous structure and use was a dead animal bar. It didn't have outdoor seating. It did not have live, it did not have live music.
Yes, it did.
Members of the public, please stop. Please stop. Members of the public.
Stop, stop. I'm sorry. Stop. Go ahead.
Okay. Apparently did, but not authorized. At least, that's what the crowd thinks. So, one way or another, whether it did or it didn't, only goes to the last two points that I make to you, which is violations of the policy. It doesn't change the fact that where we're at today, we can't be, because the director simply does not have the authority to give this. I pointed out to you already that the additional outdoor square footage, and if there's a question about that, you can look at the code, took you in excess of the 3,000 square-foot limitation, making this minor or major conditional use approval that has not been obtained as well. You know, the reality is, and there's nothing personal here. I know none of these people that are involved, but the reality is, you're confronted constantly, particularly in the Keys, where you have a collision of rights. I look at these rights when we, when we take this area to pie. And so how was this pie broken up? Well, this pie was broken up, but the status quo when these people bought this property was, we had the Safari Lounge, and we had the Marina. And ever since then, and when we have this pie, when someone gets something, someone gives up something. And so since the new owners have been there, they keep coming for pie. First, they came for the minor conditional use approval, and they said, "Okay, we want to change the status quo that existed. So go ahead and let us have some outdoor seating." Okay? Okay? My clients worked with them, created reasonable limitations, and said, "We can live with you getting more pie, because we don't think your getting more pie really is taking away from our pie," which is right up there on the mission statement, which is to protect their quality of life. So then they came back last month, actually a couple of years back, and said, "We need to amend the code, because we need some more pie. We need to have a boat dealership there." Okay? And so you guys said, or your predecessors said, "Okay, we'll give you more pie." My client said, "Okay, we're okay. You're changing the status quo again. You're getting more than you had when you bought the property." And what was the expectation they had when they bought the property? It was what was there. There were no guarantees they'd get anything else. And so here we are today, somehow blaming additional seating with no music on the failure of a restaurant, and saying, "We need more pie." But we just keep taking away from the residents' pie when we give them pie. The mission statement says that we want to protect the residents' right to quiet enjoyment of life. That's why my client is here today. I have done more than my fair share of work related to event venues, and I can promise you, there is nothing more terrifying than to think that there'll be weddings hosted out on the beach next to this property with a loud music and bands and fireworks being shot off of a barge to celebrate a wedding. That's what they're trying to protect, is their quality of life. They're trying to make sure the mission statement is fulfilled. They are amenable to reasonable limitations, but no one wants any limitations. We've actually offered and are willing to concede to certain things that have limitations. One, the special events have to be confined to the actual venue. They have to be on the veranda or within it. Two, no fireworks. Under any circumstances, can they discharge fireworks in connection with any sort of special event? They are amenable to amplified music on the veranda, so long as the amplified music is limited to daylight hours. That's it. So the simple truth is, the reason that has been proffered for this change is nonsensical. If Safari Lounge failed, it probably has more to do with the quality of the food, the quality of the service, whatever, health department, I don't know. But it surely did not fail, because you gave them additional seating and just didn't let them play music or amplified music. So for these reasons, we believe the council has no choice but to deny this application on the legal reasons that we set forth herein. But again, I stress to you, we are amenable to withdrawing our objections if those reasonable conditions that we discussed were to be put onto this. Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harris, I believe it's your turn, please. And everybody in the audience, please be respectful to the process. I'd appreciate it. Go ahead, Mr. Harris.
Good evening again. Ty Harris with the law firm of Ty Harris, PA. Notice, I'm now the attorney Ty Harris, PA, not the resident, PA. 110 Plantation Shores. And Russ and I do agree on one thing. We shouldn't be here. But the reason we shouldn't be here is a little bit different. You heard a bit of revisionist history, that there's never been events, there's never been seating, there's never been things on the outside on the deck. That's just simply not true. And you, I think you heard enough from the folks that have been down there to hear that. But first, let's just talk about the appeal itself. The appeal was filed on behalf of the Lower Matocumbi Beach Property Owners Association. Well, I looked them up. They don't own any property. I don't know how they can file an appeal. They're not a formal HOA. And the other people it says is, you know, certain adjacent property owners. That's not identifying who, who's, who's appealing. I think it's a defective appeal, and we're well past the 30 days. Some of a procedural standpoint, I think this appeal's defective to begin with. Second, the reason that we shouldn't be here isn't just because there's a defective appeal. We shouldn't be here because the footprint of use for Safari Lounge has not changed in 30 years. My understanding is that what precipitated the conditional use application was a discussion and a proposal to have extra seating out on the beach. Once that, that was taken off the table after meeting, Suntex met with the, with Robert Moser's group and met with, with the village staff, they withdrew that request. At that point, they don't need a minor conditional use. They haven't increased the intensity or, or density that would trigger either a minor conditional or a major conditional use. So in the olden days, when I was the planning director, when we had these situations, we would call the applicant up and say, "We'd like to refund you half of your money. Have a nice day. You don't need a minor conditional or a major conditional use." So unless they've expanded the use of the property, which they haven't, and there's no evidence that they have, they didn't even need a minor conditional use. So that was what we would call legally void ab initio, meaning void from the beginning. So they never needed it. They, they imposed conditions on themselves because they were trying to be good neighbors. Those conditions didn't work out. You know, the conditions that they need to abide by are the village's ordinances and regulations, not Robert's rules. You know, closing at nine o'clock during the weekday is just not tenable. It's just not. It wasn't something that Safari Lounge, the dead animal, ever had to do. Why are we imposing conditions now that are beyond what was allowed before? Because if they haven't expanded the use, there is no need for a minor conditional use, so we shouldn't be here. That we agree upon. Second, I will tell you on the record now, we are absolutely comfortable with having no fireworks or no noise makers for any type of events. We, we've offered that before. I think I've talked to at least four of you about reasonable, you know, accommodations are one thing, but when we get into hours of operation, not being able to have live music, not being able to have amplified music. You know, I, I promise I won't make any pie references like Russ, but if you know me, I'm a movie buff. And two movies come to mind. I feel like I'm Kevin Bacon. I feel like I'm Kevin Bacon in Footloose. I'm dealing with the "you can't dance" crowd. You know, these are conditions that you put on, because you don't want people to have fun. Which brings me to my second movie reference. This one's a little more obscure. If you remember Tom Cruise in Minority Report. You know, they arrested everybody, because they knew they were going to do a crime in the future. What these conditions that we're asking to have removed are actually, you know, perspective. They're not because these guys have done anything wrong, or the dead animal did anything wrong. It's, "Well, we don't trust the rules of the village to keep us safe and to keep it from being noisy and out of hand. So, we're going to put these nine o'clock restrictions, we're going to treat you like a third grader, instead of a responsible business owner." And that, I find abhorrent, and I think that most everybody here, and I didn't make them fill out speaker cards, but I wanted them to be here to show that there is support in the community for the dead animal. And so, at this point, I would just ask that they raise their hand, if you're here in support.
Just a few of us. And we all vote.
So, again, I don't think the appeal is actually legally constituted, and I don't think that we should even be subjected to a minor conditional use, although we are still willing, despite that, to agree to those conditions that we left untouched, because those were common sense, like parking and things like that. We've also, you know, continued this dialogue about shutting everything down at 10 o'clock outside. That's a reasonable, that's a reasonable time. That's okay. But at dusk, when everybody turns into a vampire? No, we're not doing that. I'm sure there's a movie reference there, but I'll spare you a third. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions. I have representatives of SunTex here, and as most of you know, that they would like to enter into a lease with a local operator, Eddie, who owns Hibano South. And so, you know... As all of you know, it's one thing...
Can I just ask that the public please refrain from commenting, or cheering, or booing, or whatever it is? In order to speak, you have to be sworn in. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, that we need to have a clean record, regardless of which decision the council makes. So please refrain from that. If you'd like to show support, you can do silent shaky hands, whatever it's called.
Jazz hands. Jazz...
I'll simply end with this. The staff report in and of itself constitutes competent substantial evidence in a quasi-judicial hearing, which is why Russ and his group tried so hard to get staff to change its mind and to recommend denial or to recommend modified conditions. But that's the evidence that's on the record, that supports our stance, which is these conditions are completely unreasonable and anti-isle marada, when we're in a tourist commercial zoning district, in a place that's been open for 30 years or more. And with that, thank you very much.
Ty, before you leave, does anybody on council have anything for Mr. Harris before we start? Steve? Anna?
Not right now.
Deb? Okay, thank you. Okay, John, I guess we do all in favor first, correct? Marnie?
No comment.
That's what I did? Honestly. Honestly. Go ahead, Marnie.
The folks who have indicated support will speak first. We begin with Robert Moser.
Can I clarify the support for the appeal?
Yes.
So, yes, support would be in support of denying the... affirming the appeal, denying the planning director's decision.
But I do think, do think that things got... First of all, my name is Robert Moser. Hello, council and mayor and staff, and audience who hates me. I am a homeowner on Sunset Drive since 1976, although we've been coming down since the '60s. I'm also the president of the Lower Matta Cumbi Beach Property Owners Association. So I hope that I get both three and five minutes, so eight minutes.
I hope not.
Firstly, I'd like to say that I take just a little offense to Mr. Harris's calling me out and contributing to bullying. It's just not right and not fair, and I hope that the rest of this meeting goes civilly. Next, over the last, over the 30 years, it's actually been since 1982, when they were opened at the Safari Lounge, so 40 years minus the X amount of years they were closed as a result of Hurricane Irma and their reasoning for closing down otherwise, there has never been outdoor amplified music. There has never been outdoor seating. Certainly not permitted. And even if either of those were true, it was closed for over two years, and there's certain rules in the village that do not allow nonconformance to come back in. Next, one of the main points that Mr. Harris had mentioned was there was no ownership. Well, a judge recently has declared that the homeowners association owns an easement, and that it is their property on Sunset Drive. Not to mention a bank account worth, well, a nice bank account. We pay for insurance for board of directors, we pay for insurance for the street and for the easement. Next, a new application for outdoor seating requires a hearing, period. No matter what negotiations are going on, I'm not going to discuss anything further on that matter. Next, outdoor seating is an increase. So, I'm going to leave that on the record. Now, I'm going to go into what I was going to start with, which are just the facts.
Robert, can you stop for a second? Marnie? She needs to add two minutes to this. She had you at three.
Thank you.
Thank you. I saw you playing with the clock. Okay.
So, the mission state...
Representatives that represented the association that had...
Could you hold that for me, please? I reclaim my time.
Okay, everybody, we need to take a step back.
Thank you. So, the mission statement above says the right to quiet enjoyment of life, unless, of course, you want to be outside amplified music and drinking. SunTex is the owner of hundreds of marinas and restaurants that they operate. They are a very high-end operator. SunTex bought Calusa Cove and the Safari Lounge. SunTex is the applicant, not our dear friend Eddie from Hibano's, which we frequent on a regular basis. In March of 2023, the village proposed conditions on the restaurant, Safari Lounge, Oceanside Safari, on their restaurant application for outdoor seating. SunTex revised those conditions and sent them back to the village. The village then updated those conditions to address SunTex's concerns and sent them back to SunTex. SunTex then approved those revised conditions for their restaurant. The village then relied on this agreement and issued the permit for conditional seating, for outdoor seating. The restaurant was open for about two years and shut down. A main point that's going to be raised tonight are the hours that are in the condition. The association, myself, no one ever asked for hours to be included in a condition. They certainly didn't ask for the hours that were mentioned. But by the way, for only four days a week, those hours are only one hour earlier than Hibano's, which is one of the most successful, I'm sorry, it is the most successful restaurant in Lower Matta Cumbi Key. Eddie from Hibano's now wants to lease it.
Robert, your time is up.
Eddie might not always want to be their tenant. Last sentence, if the weddings and special events are allowed on the beach, is that development as it was said that there is no development?
Thank you.
With environmental concerns.
Thank you. Marnie, who's next, please?
Next is Joe Campbell.
So, wait, are we're... Joe's in favor.
I'm going by what people wrote on...
I think there's a misunderstanding.
I think there is, too.
Okay, so, Mr. Robert just spoke against that. So, it was supposed to be for first, but it was for the appeal. I understand the confusion, but I don't want everybody else to be confused.
Well, I don't...
How do we fix it?
I would suggest, then, that folks who have asked to provide testimony, just come up with their support.
Yeah, when you guys come up, tell us if you're for or against, because it is sort of confusing. So, Mr. Campbell, come on up. It's very nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Does this thing work?
It's turned on. If it's not, well, like...
That might come off the podium.
Yeah, it does.
It does come off the podium.
Well, there you go. All right. What a hard act, what a hard act to follow here. My name is Dr. Joseph E. Campbell. I live at 121 Tollgate Lane, Isle Marada, I should say, Lower Matta Cumbi and Tollgate Shores. Before I go on, since I represent the homeowners of Tollgate Shores, could I get an extra few minutes?
Go ahead, John.
I was just saying, in terms of representing, our code requires evidence of representation. So, if you do have evidence, if there's, if you do have evidence that you're representing a formal organization...
You mean like an official card or something?
I mean, is this a, you say you represent the residents, or you represent a corporate, like a corporation?
We have a homeowners association, and I talked to people there, and they said, "If you're going, just go on with the letter that you wrote." They saw that. I sent it to all of the council members, and they said they were in complete agreement with it. They said, so...
Counsel, usually we would require that the board okay it.
Joe, try to do it in three minutes. Do it in three.
Well, how can I start? You know, I'd like to mention a couple of things, but first, I have to witness a miracle here tonight, because I know lawyers can talk about everything and anything and make things seem obvious, but tonight, it's a first. The lawyer actually made me hungry, talking about so much pie. Okay. Very quickly, I met a man a long time ago, who had a vision. It was Leslie Tassel. He did more for this portion of the Keys than anyone else, and it expanded all the way to Mariners Hospital, built a building there. And when it was done, he walks over, he says, "It's bleak, we need art." He went out and bought many pictures of local artists and displayed them on the wall. His pride and glory was Calusa Cove. He said, "We're going to have, you know, a barn, we're going to have this, that, the other." And in particular, his favorite was the Safari Lounge. I think we owe it to him to continue it. Irma took it away from us. It's up to us as a village, not lawyers, but as a village, to say, "Let's bring it back." Why? We're the only island of the village of islands that doesn't have a bar. Okay? I demand parity. We should have that. So bring back the dead animal bar, whatever you want to call it. We need it. Why? Number of things. Yes, we did party there, outside, with extra seating, et cetera, whether it be Christmas, St. Patty's Day, Memorial Day, Fourth of July. Oh, fireworks were included, some guy came down religiously, wasn't even a member of the bar or a resident here, but shot him off. Okay, fine. And even Labor Day. I mention that one, because few of us, especially veterans, like to raise a glass for the 242 veterans that were killed in the park at Tollgate Shores. Okay? So, we like to take care of our own. One of the things that's missing, people who died would be celebrated for their lives. So people like Barbara Neal or Chuck McCarthy, nothing, because there was no bar. We need it. It's something the government can't provide, but at least you can agree to it. So, Irma took it away? Could you please return our bar? We need it.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay.
And you did it in three minutes, so I appreciate you. There you go. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Doc.
Marnie? And whoever comes up next, please say if you're for or against. So, Marnie?
Thank you. Yes, next up is Bill Hardy.
My name's Bill Hardy, Lisbon Court, Port Antigua. First of all, I'd like to thank each and every one of you. This has just been a sample for us of the rigors of doing what you do. Thank you. I'm here to give Eddie total support in unrestricted activity at the Safari Lounge, dead animal bar, as you can tell by my hat. One thing we need to take and keep in mind, specifically regarding music, don't forget that the DAB was completely reconstructed after Irma with hurricane windows. And those of you who have gone through old windows versus hurricane windows, as I have, know that they are unbelievable in terms of noise mitigation. So I think some of the concerns by the neighborhood with regards to music are unfounded. Secondly, I'd like to mention Eddie is a local businessman, obviously extremely conscientious, tremendous success with the restaurant. Try the Hook &amp; Cook, by the way, it's fantastic. I have known two people who lived on their boats in the harbor at Calusa Cove. Called them both, they both said they were never disturbed by the antics at the Safari Lounge, even with the old windows. So I think some of the concerns, and I get it, I mean, I understand that folks have concerns. I have concerns in my neighborhood when folks get a little spunky and rambunctious. But at the same time, I think their concerns can due to distance and not inconsequently windows, they don't need to worry about it. All the best to Eddie. I give him my ultimate respect, and I urge you strongly to give him unlimited access to develop the Safari Lounge.
Thank you.
Questions?
No, no questions. Marnie, who's next, please? Please state if you're for or against, please?
Four.
Okay.
Definitely four, definitely. My name is Thorndike Williams, 142 Sappadilla Drive, Lower Matta Cumbi. I just want to keep it simple, because I think it is actually simple. We're just looking for some relief to some of the requirements or restrictions, rather, that were put on the recent paperwork or ordinance, however you want to describe it, so that this thing can operate as a local, small local business in a profitable manner, because otherwise, nobody's going to want to do it. But I just, I just ran across a copy of this Keys Life magazine, and I thought something was interesting about what I read in one of the first paragraphs of one of these articles in here. It says something you already, you all already know, but it says, "The Florida Keys have always prided themselves on their small town..." Says, "The Florida Keys have always prided themselves on their small-town charm and local businesses. From family-owned restaurants, serving the catch of the day, to dive shops run by third-generation locals, the islands thrive on that intimate, everybody-knows-everybody atmosphere." Interestingly enough, that was the opening of an article about what we're talking about. So, there's a certain understanding of what we value as members of the community. And then, I'll just repeat that, let's send a letter to, the, send a letter to the council members, basically just indicating that as longtime residents, and I will just repeat this to you, of Lower Matacumbi, my wife and I are writing in strong support of reopening the Safari Lounge at Colusa Cove. "We believe there is a significant need to attempt to protect and preserve at least some of the originality and character of the village that initially attracted many of us to this unique area. In the face of continued relentless corporate and private equity intrusion, we believe in the efforts to preserve at least some of the small pieces of culture and character of an area that are disappearing as we speak. We, we ask only for a balance between the need for tourist-supported financial interests of the village in general and resort-style businesses specifically, and small locally-owned businesses that contribute to the originality and character that we referred to above. We need to get some people interested in preserving what we, what I consider, and I think a lot of people also consider, is a community landmark."
Thank you, your three minutes are up. I, I let you keep going, because I felt bad, I didn't want to cut you off.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I, I vote yes, please.
Thank you, I appreciate, appreciate you.
Okay.
Marnie, who's next, please?
Uh, next is Joe Wishmeyer.
Uh, Mr. Wishmeyer, are, are you for or against? Let us know. Gee, anybody want, anybody want to take a bet?
Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. I'm gonna say neutral, because I just don't understand this for and against. So, let me just give you a background. I worked at an area, I don't really want to say what it was, across the street from the Safari Lounge. For over 30 years, I had my boat there. I spent many, many a time off-duty at the, and I appreciate people calling it the DA. That's what we used to call it all the time, especially by some of the pictures that were inside, Mr. Tassel himself. Have there been some special events there? To a degree, yes. We actually even had a Pirates Day one time, where I had my sailboat over there, taking people out, including Mr. Tassel. The biggest problem that I have here is, you know, one of the conditions for the outdoor seating was no amplified music, and the council agreed to that, and I think that was pretty cut and dry. However, my biggest problem, and I would urge some of the council maybe to ask the Planning Director, when she comes back, about parking. Parking has always been an issue over there. Especially, you have, I believe it's 52 timeshare units. I believe that there's a code that says you have to have a certain amount of parking for them. You have charter boats. Again, I believe there's a, says that you have to have a certain amount of parking spaces for that. You have the bar. The restaurant, thankfully Hibano's is still there. I can't tell you, I think the longest a restaurant was there, maybe four months or six months before Hibano's took over. It seemed like it was always changing over. But they are a very successful restaurant. Now, we even have a boat dealership. One thing that I'm, I'm afraid is not even included in any of this parking is the barn that has all the boat storage, in-and-out boat storage. I don't believe there was ever a reference for parking or any parking spaces for that. So, is there a parking analysis? I don't know. I think that that, that is the, the only complaint that I have. I've, I've spent many a time over there, had a great time at, at the DA, and I would love to see it continue, especially when it was a locals' affordable place, as compared to some of them that are out there now. But I wish that somebody on council would ask the Planning Director, "Is there a parking analysis, and what are the requirements in those specific parking that I mentioned? The timeshare units, the charter boats, the bar, the restaurant, the boat dealership, and especially the barn?" Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Marnie?
Next is Paul Garber.
Paul, please state if you're for or against?
Um, opposed to the change in conditional use.
Go ahead.
Yep, so Paul Garber, Sunset Drive, Lower Mat. So, my wife and I are full-time residents of Sunset Drive, and we live a very short distance across the water from the Safari Lounge. And contrary to some of the misinformation that had been circulating, the residents of Iroquois Drive and Sunset Drive are not responsible for the closure of the Safari Lounge, nor are we opposed to the reopening. Our concern lies solely with the permitting of outdoor music and amplified sound, and the effect this will have on our quality of life. Excessive and prolonged outdoor music diminishes the peace and quiet that residents in the area have long valued. On March 17th, 2023, representatives of SunTex met with residents from Iroquois Drive and Sunset Drive, and clearly stated that there would be no outdoor music or amplified sound. The permit that allowed the Safari Lounge to reopen was based on these conditions. It is troubling that these terms have been altered, and that the Village Planning and Development Services appears to support the change without regard for those living nearby. For many years, the Safari Lounge coexisted peacefully within our community without outdoor music. That precedent demonstrates that a successful business can operate here without negatively impacting the residents. We respect and ask the Village Council to honor the original agreement and permit conditions. No business, regardless of popularity, should operate in a way that infringes on the well-being of its neighbors or disregards prior commitments made to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marnie?
Next is Sue Miller.
Sue, please state if you're for or against?
I'm for and against. Sue Miller, Lower Matacumbi. I find this really an amazing meeting, and I love to see this many people. I wish there were that, this many people when we were talking about the budget and so many of the other critical issues, so please come back often. I, I find that, that the purpose of this is really confusing to me. This was considered a, the changes being requested are considered a minor deviation that can be changed by the Planning Director. I don't know whether, whether, how you judge what a minor deviation is, but I didn't go to law school, but I was listening, and it was pretty confusing, but I believe that it is not a minor deviation, and it doesn't fit with the code. That's what I came up with, but I always thought I should go to law school before I made statements like that. I think that this audience makes it clear. We've always joked about how we used to be a quaint little fishing village with a drinking problem. Maybe now we're becoming a quaint little drinking village with a fishing problem, because I know the fishing isn't like it used to be. So, I happen to love Hibano's, and Eddie, I just, I think he walks on water, and he's done a remarkable job at Hibano's with outdoor seating. No outdoor seating, is there? No amplified music. And he can do anything without, without amplified music and without the seating, I'm convinced. His, once he walks onto that property, it will be a success. He will make it a success no matter what. And so, I'm not sure that we even need these changes. It's gonna be a success one way or the other, and everybody, you'll all want to be there, because it will be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Marnie?
Our last speaker is Brad Darty.
I'm gonna ask our Planning Director and our lawyer to keep it down. Everybody else has to, I can hear you.
Brad Dougherty, Lower Matacumbi.
For or against?
I'm for the Safari Bar, and I'm against the appeal.
Go ahead.
So, you know, I've been down here a long time. I've got property in the subdivision that they all speak about, Lower Matacumbi Beach. The problem is, some people have made statements here saying that they talked to the residents on Iroquois. Now, there are members that are in the association that are on both Sunset and Iroquois, but not all property owners are, so they don't speak for everybody, and not all of us have been included in some of their discussions if we weren't a member of the association. I'd like to talk about Mr. Tassel. Great guy, used to drive down the street in his golf cart. He'd always stop, talk to my kids, ask if he could have the coconuts off my coconut tree. I said, "Mr. Tassel, I'm, I'll cut them open." "What, you want me to break open some?" He'd go, "Oh, no, no, I want to paint them." And I send them to my neighbors up north in Michigan. Great guy. He opened a Safari Bar in 1981, 44 years ago. Hurricane Irma shut it down. So, they used to have numerous activities there. They had charity events, they had events where the politicians running for office would meet and greet the local residents, all kinds of activities. So, I'm against giving them any conditions. I think it ought to be, all that should be rescinded. They shouldn't be restricted to 12 events. And more importantly, I'm concerned about why this appeal was even processed. As the, Mr. Harris stated, and I've, I'm not an attorney, but I can read, and I can read pretty good. And the, the, the appeal, and Mr. Yegel seemed to be a fanatic on codes and how strict it should be and following them. Well, he didn't follow the application process, because it says, to file an appeal, you have to be a adjacent property owner. There are no adjacent property owners listed on his appeal to the Planning Department. Lower Matacumbi Beach Property Owners Association does not own property. An easement is not ownership of property. There are no identified adjacent property owners, so it's a nebulous appeal that's been requested. The Planning Department should have denied it immediately and told them the grounds for the reason why. We shouldn't be here at all. I support the Safari Bar as it was. Please deny this appeal, throw it out, we shouldn't be here, and remove all the conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marnie, where are we at?
Uh, there are no other speakers.
No, I didn't want to say something about the pie, the Mr. Yegel. He likes codes and he likes pie. So, I want to say, not long ago, some of these same people, this association, they wanted to take my pie away. They wanted to prevent the residents from going to the beach in their boats, in the shallow waters. Just remember that.
Thank you.
They don't have a problem taking away other people's pie.
Got it, thank you. Okay. Marnie, public comment is now closed, and so. I have, she has a list, come on, I didn't know. Come on, where'd you, he's on the ground, there he is.
I just wanted, wait, just confirming that you were sworn in.
Yes, I was here from the beginning. Hello, everybody. So, everybody knows I wear my heart on my sleeve.
Right, are you for or against?
I am for, 100%.
What's your name, please?
Pasta Pantaleo, P-S-T-A-P-A-N-T-A-L-E-O, I filled out the, right? So, when I see the mission, it's for all the people, not three or four. This is about three or four people, always has been, always will be. I live on the street, I know that, who they are. Same people that danced to some real heavy rock and roll at the DAB every Tuesday night. They were all there, we all partied together, we all hung out. I also know Eddie a long time. He's very reputable, he's a pillar of the community. He's not gonna do anything to jeopardize our quality of life on that piece of property. I know that for a fact. What he's gonna do is what everybody else does. We can't take Island Grill, we can't take Lorelei, we can't take all these places and start dictating what they can do. People come here and spend millions of dollars a year to take the flavor of our Keys, and that is one of our flavors. Our flavor is acceptance, a little music, a little fun. We have, we have some laws in the village, and everybody has to abide by those laws, everybody. According, sound ordinances, I play live at a lot of places. I know what the decibel ratings are. I know how loud we can play at some of the breweries. And we have live music at every brewery, up and down the street. This is no different. He's not asking for live music. He's not even asking to have big parties. He's asking to have a business that he can dictate what he can do within the letter of the law of the village. And this village was formed on one thing, mom-and-pop shops. That's what it was formed on, that's why we succeeded from the union, that's why we became a village. We wanted no big box stores, we got some, we know, we had to bend on rules, we had to get these people in here. I get it, we had, we need a pharmacy, so we break a rule. We need all these things, but what we don't have is, we have corporations, but we have mom-and-pops. I'm a mom-and-pop, everybody around here is mom-and-pops. Without the mom-and-pops, we're not a village anymore. We're just not. And one of the best mom-and-pops we have is Hibano's. It's hard to have a restaurant here and make it. How many people have changed restaurants and get that feeling where they're not here anymore? People aren't here. We have a real great standard with, with Hibano's. Let the man have his place, let the man have his property, he's gonna do a really good job with it, and there's ordinance against anything he's wanting to do. And no fireworks, no fireworks. I'm, I don't like fireworks anyway.
Thank you, Pasta. Thank you very much. Okay, so now, public comment is now closed. All right. Counsel, who wants to go first?
Can I just, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that were said. So, first, the adjacent property owner appeal rights are in the Site Plan Review section. This is not a Site Plan Review, this is an administrative appeal. If you read the Administrative Appeal section, those refer to any person aggrieved by an administrative decision, so they had every right to file the appeal. Second, regarding Mr. Yegel's comments regarding temporary uses would just be a free-for-all, and they didn't need to apply for a temporary use permit. They would still need to apply for a temporary use permit under that section of the code. This would just limit how many they could apply for. And third, the comment Mr. Yegel made about they didn't have the, we don't have the right to do this under the Minor Deviation section. If you read one section, I gotta go back there now, sorry. If you read one section down from that, letter J, "Any development permit for a conditional use may be amended, extended, varied, or altered only pursuant to the standards and procedures established for its original approval." This was originally approved by the Planning Director, so it can be amended by the Planning Director.
Okay.
That is section 30-216-J.
So, let me ask you an obvious question. When you add the size of the inside and the outside, it is, you know, he's down there bugging you now, isn't he? When you add the two sizes, the inside, the outside, it is over 3,000.
But it was always existing.
Okay, that's what I needed to know, okay. Anything else for Jennifer? Do you have anything else before we start?
No, ma'am.
Okay, who wants to go first?
I don't know.
Go ahead.
Sometimes it pays to be the old guy in the room. So, but, you know, the, the code used to say, and the county code had always said, that when they adopted the code in 1986, there was a clause called a Deemer Clause, and it said that when you were, if you were in existence on the day of the adoption of the code, you were deemed to have a conditional use. And since the code went in, in fact, in 1986, and it's carried on, and this was built in, in the early, early 80s, yeah, I frequented a bunch back in the day. You know, it was a conditional use, it was something that was previously approved, and there was outdoor seating there, and there was outdoor entertainment there. The, the code, you know, says that 216-E, uh, says, "The director, and of course, with the procedures and standards and limitations, the chapter shall approve, approve with conditions, or deny an application." So, they, she does have the authority to, to, to work through the code. John, you need me?
Yeah, I, well, I just wanted to, um, it sounded... Yeah, I just wanted to, it sounded like we were getting into deliberations as opposed to questions of staff. Under the code, before we get into council deliberations, the staff and applicant have the right to make a final argument. So, I just wanted to make sure we...
My bad. You wanna do that?
Yeah, sure. Let him do that.
Okay.
They can also waive it if they...
I'm all set. I don't need to make any additional arguments.
I think Mr. Yegel's standing up, so I could...
Yeah.
I'm so confused about you.
Yeah, I know.
We are too.
We're looking at a code change on this.
So, the evidence is closed. So, counsel, I want to remind you, this isn't about having arrows. This is not about whether Safari Lounge should be allowed to reopen or not. Safari Lounge can reopen anytime, anytime at all. It closed because they said, "Well, we can't make it work." Why can't they make it work? That probably has to do with what they paid with the property. I don't know. But the idea that we're sitting here today saying Safari Lounge, you know, we're trying to stop it from reopening, that's not at all. There's no prohibition of Safari opening today. That's it. So, as to the evidence, I think the evidence is clear that the code was not complied with. And as the mayor pointed out, we clearly have exceeded the major conditional use requirements, or we exceeded the square footage requiring a major conditional use. The argument in response is, well, we didn't do it right, but we're allowed to not do it right a second time. I don't think that's what the law says. So, you all put in a lot of time, and I don't wanna make this any longer than it needs to be. This isn't a popularity contest. It's simply about reasonable limitations that allow both parties. Safari, or that property owner's uses have been expanded consistently since they got here. It's just asking reasonable limitations to be put in place so that people can enjoy their residential lifestyle. And in that regard, if you look at the zoning map, that property is surrounded by residential neighborhoods. The only exception is the Boyce Fickout camp across the street. So, that's all people are asking. They're not trying to put Eddie out of business. They're not trying to do anything to harm him. They would like it to be successful. They just wanna preserve their lifestyle as well. So, please, understand, it's nothing personal. It's simply balancing rights. Whether you like the pie analogy or not, it's about balancing rights. And it's a tough thing for you guys to do. We're asking you to preserve ours, and that's it. Thank you.
Mayor?
Excuse me?
May I reply in fairness to a comment, please? It's a question directed to you at your discretion from the hearing proceedings. I was...
I'm looking at our attorney.
Only staff and applicant have the right for...
Thank you.
Are we the applicant?
Thank you. Your attorney is. Your attorney spoke, so now I believe Ty wants to get up there. I refer to the attorney because he knows much more than I know.
Attorneys get paid by the word, right? So, just to summarize, Mr. Yegel pointed out that he did not believe that the modification of the conditions met one point two point four point one and one point two point four point three. I think those are the ones. As you heard on the record from your professional staff, under section thirty-two sixteen, the planning and development service director, or the planning director, has the authority to modify these conditions. So, with that, I will tell you that the appellant failed to meet their evidentiary burden, which was theirs to carry in an appeal, and with that, I got nothing else to say.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, John. You wanna say something?
I was just saying, now we can, we can close the testimony portion and move on to council deliberations.
Okay. All right. Don, do you wanna pick up where you were?
Sure. Yeah, and to follow up with what's been said, thirty-two sixteen E does give the planning director to approve or approve with conditions, or, you know, changes to the conditional use. It's been an existing use. It's tourist commercial and not a non-conforming use that I can see. So, I just think that, I think that sometimes the neighbors think of something that is just gonna be terrible, and I heard this when I was sitting in that audience on another conditional use and approval that was made. The sky was gonna fall and, you know, terrible things were gonna happen. And there's been, to my knowledge, no complaints from that particular business, and they're, I guess they're doing okay. Jennifer, do you, have you ever asked your code enforcement people in the past how many noise complaints that we've actually had from, from different businesses or people of other businesses in the village?
In anticipation of this meeting, because I thought that this question might come up, I did ask code enforcement to do a report. Over the last ten years within the village, we've had ten noise complaints over the entire village, three of which ended up in code enforcement. The rest were dismissed as not, not actual noise complaints.
So, three actual in ten years that were...
Yes, sir.
...made that we know is a complaint.
Yes, sir.
That's my point, is that nobody likes change and nobody, everybody anticipates that the sky is gonna fall and, you know, it makes people wanna do resolutions, and it makes people wanna change the code and not allow people to run their businesses. And the sky's not falling, and we've got codes for noise complaints, and if somebody's violating the code when it comes to a noise complaint, pick up the phone. That's what we've got our sheriffs for. That's what we've got code enforcement. But don't make somebody guilty before they even get a chance to do what they gotta do. We've gotta support our local businesses. We've gotta, you know, we've... They're exactly right. Lower Matticombi has one restaurant, and I just think that Jennifer was within the bounds of what she's allowed to do, and I just, I don't see a problem here.
All right. Who wants to go next? Anna, Steve, Deb?
Sure.
Go ahead.
I'll go. I can tell you, being the young woman in the room, Dawn, that as a kid, I have been to Safari Lounge, and there has been outdoor seating. There has been live music. There has been many events at that place for many years. So, why anybody would even agree to these other conditions to start with, I don't know why they would do that. Eddie is a stand-up person. I know him personally. I know he would do nothing to disrespect the rest of that Lower Matticombi Beach. Robert, you're a great person also. I think that you guys can all get along. I think that he's not gonna do anything that's gonna jeopardize that business, and I think it, I think it would be a good thing for Lower Matticombi. Get back to where it was.
Steve?
I guess I'm seeing a trend of whether it's residents or businesses going out, getting permits, not being satisfied with what the parameters are in those permits, and coming back to us for these changes. That's, that's what I'm seeing again here. I think that Mr. Harris was trying to indicate that, that the owner was somehow forced to sign this original, or these original caveats. There's, they weren't forced. They were presented with this so they could open up the bar again, and they accepted. So, now we're back here again to seek that change, to modify. And while I have every confidence that Mr. Ramos could operate a successful bar, whether there is seating outside or music outside or inside, I think that's made clear here. So, I guess I'm just concerned about the trend that we're setting here when businesses or residents come in and they get something, and then they want to expand on that. That's really my, my main concern here. I think that, that should this go through, I also have every confidence that Mr. Ramos can work with the, with the neighborhood association to, to maintain a continual relationship to make sure that there are no complaints. I'm wondering if there's any sort of agreement that could be made for sound muffling devices, if they were to be music outside, to help in some sort of agreement with, between the two sides. But that's really where I'm coming from on this, is that I'm just concerned about this trend that we keep changing things when people come back to us when they originally agreed to something.
I think we change things a lot of times because time's changing. It's, look at Manny and Isis. It was a little teeny-tiny place, few tables, and now look what Chef Michael did to that place. So, to say people keep coming back and want more and more and more, times are changing. Things are changing. The demands are different. So, we have to, we have to do that. Now, Ty and I have worked together on several projects. I see where there can be some give and take on both sides, as always, Ty. I see where the hours are sort of ridiculous, but yet then again, I agree with the fireworks. So, I'd be open to, I do like the stipulations. It's only fair. And not everything, like I said, some of them are too stiff, but I see where there's the ability to find the middle of the road and to make both sides happy. You cannot, cannot stop a commercial business that, you know, you just can't. People have property rights, but the neighborhood, they also have rights. So, you try to find the balance between the two, like we did with the brewery and tavernier for Chris Trentine. There hasn't been a single complaint, and it was like the sky was falling when we did that. So, I'm, I'd be more than willing to go through these things, find the middle of the road between the two, and let this move forward. Somebody made a reference to a restaurant, well, there's a difference between a restaurant and a bar. Habanos is strictly a restaurant. This is gonna be a bar, so you can't say they can be exactly the same. As far as the music goes, I don't see Metallica showing up there. I just don't. And, you know, I'm picturing acoustic guitar or something, and so...
Or something like that.
Yeah, there you go. Or Pasta's Band. But I'm just saying that we can find the middle of the road, and if everybody's willing to sit down and negotiate fair, we can make everybody happy because, like everybody else, I even have my little giraffe that was in my drink from the Dead Animal Bar. Still in my flower shop, actually. So, I think compromise is always the correct path, so that's what I'm looking for. Deb?
So, there, if it becomes a problem, there are sound barriers that can be used. We've seen them used in this town before on the Northern Inn, in places, and especially when they're on the water. So, but we don't have any history of that happening so far. You were perfectly right, is as time change, businesses change, and I agree with you, I, if I was them, I would have never agreed to those hours to begin with. It doesn't say that I don't think we should support our noise ordinance. They, they can stay open all night, as far as I'm concerned, but there is a noise ordinance that needs to be followed. And I don't have a lot of history down there, but I can tell you my dad does. He used to come here in the early days, and they, they used to talk a lot about the place. I would, I would say that our mission here tonight is to say that the, the planning director were either supporting what she put in or not supporting what we put in, not necessarily changing the conditions. And I'm satisfied with the conditions, the way they're written, but I think she had the right to make that call.
I do too, but I do see where the hours could be adjusted a little bit, you know? I mean, that's...
The hours?
Yeah. But what time they're open and stuff.
I don't think that that's our business, what time they're open.
Well, I'm just saying, right now, it's pretty early.
Eleven AM?
Yeah. No, no, no. I meant closing. I meant closing.
Oh, no, no. That's being withdrawn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what's being withdrawn. It's only the eight that's listed in the book.
Okay. Got it now.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, that's good. It's good. Go ahead.
You know, when I was building official of Island Marauder, we got, we kept getting a complaint from one particular bar. And, and it, you know, I went to the owner and just said, "Why don't you put up some ice and glass and see if that does it?" He put the ice and glass and a complaint stopped.
It does.
And it really, you know, it's, the noise ordinance is so subjective. I wish one of these days, we would go to a noise ordinance that used decibels, and they were something that was metered and something like that. It's so subjective that it, it makes people kinda get antsy. Like Jennifer said, in the past ten years, there's, there's really only been three documented complaints, and I think people have the right to come back to this council and say, "It's not working." And I, and I can tell you that, that the plant, these conditions that were placed on that were placed on a previous planning director that was so overly restrictive on everything that, you know, so many of the restrictions that were placed on businesses were just crazy. And that, that's just not the way this town's ever been, and I don't wanna see us head that direction. We need to support our local businesses while protecting our neighbors.
Yep.
We need to support our local businesses.
All right. So, anybody else? That's what I was gonna say. Does anybody have a motion?
I'll make a motion, and John, make sure I get this correct. I'm, I wanna make a motion that we're supporting what the planning director approved.
So, it would be a motion to deny the appeal.
To deny the appeal. All right. Thank you.
Second? Anybody?
I'll second.
Okay. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Deb Gillis.
She doesn't notice a yes or no.
So, that is a yes, I wanna say, correct?
Correct. If you want to support your motion, yes.
It's so hard.
Okay. And Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Anna Richards?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
That motion passes five to zero.
You can say something now. You can say something now.
Take a five-minute break today.
Mayor, can we take a break?
... of Ty Harris, PA, agent for Leaven Family LLLP to amend the village's future land use map from residential conservation to mixed use for the subject property at 7680 Overseas Highway located on Lower Matacombe Key with real estate number 00396950-000200 and to establish a new subarea policy under Objective 1-2.11 as legally described herein, providing for the transmittal of this ordinance to the State Department of Commerce and providing for an effective date upon the approval of this ordinance by the State Department of Commerce. Tab E is an ordinance of Isla Marada Village of Islands, Florida considering the request of Ty Harris, PA, agent for Leaven Family LLLP to amend the official zoning map from native residential to neighborhood commercial for the subject property at 76800 Overseas Highway located on Lower Matacombe Key with real estate number 00396950-000200 as legally described herein, providing for the transmittal of this ordinance to the State Department of Commerce and providing for an effective date upon the approval of this ordinance by the State Department of Commerce. Madam Mayor, again, this is a, before we begin, if the council, if you would please disclose any ex parte communications you may have had with anyone with regard to tabs D and E, please include whether the person represented in any group or entity as well as the subject matter as you recall.
Okay. Deb, anything?
Yeah. I talked to Ty.
Microphone.
Can you imagine?
Microphone.
Oh, sorry. I talked to Ty. I also talked to Cheryl Coberson and Lori Lulon separately after the LPA meeting.
Don?
I spoke to Lori Lulon. I spoke to Jim Ryan. I spoke to Ty Harris, and I think that's all.
Okay. For me, it was Ty, Nancy Herschoff, who's involved in it, and one of the family members, can't remember his name, I apologize. Anna?
I think Ty's the only one I spoke to about it.
Steve?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Yes, one of the family members.
Took a few minutes to sink in, didn't it?
Cannot remember his name, yeah.
Yeah, it's the son. It was the son. Okay. Can't remember. All right. So Jennifer, would you like to talk to us?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, council. Again, this is two ordinances, one to amend the future land use map and one to amend the official zoning map, both for the property located at 76800 Overseas Highway. This property is the former tennis center, it's abandoned tennis center and retail shop. The property is 3.2 acres. The current flum is native residential. No, that's the zoning, I apologize. The current flum is residential conservation. They're proposing to go to mixed use. The current zoning is native residential and they're proposing to go to neighborhood commercial. The applicant's agent has submitted needs analysis and detailing the map amendment and flum amendment requests. It's in your packet. The subject property has the existing residential conservation, future land use map designation. The property to the north, south, and west is designated conservation. The properties to the east across Overseas Highway are designated mixed use and residential conservation. The character of their surrounding area is mixed use with residential uses and conservation uses. The property is disturbed in the area that has been developed and has a hammock surrounding the disturbed area. The applicant has submitted a vegetation survey and a habitat analysis on the undisturbed area. According to this survey, the area is classified as high-quality tropical hardwood hammock. The property is not recognized as habitat to any state or federal listed animal species. A portion of the property is within the Florida Forever boundary. Previously, the village had expressed interest in including the entirety of the property in the Florida Forever boundary list, and the property owner was not amenable to this idea. Pursuant to the village's GIS data and records, the parcel is identified as hammock and scarified. The full analysis is in your packet. Again, I won't bore everybody with the details, you can read that. I would just also note that the LPA did read, review this twice. After the first hearing, there was some discussion about the concerns going to neighborhood commercial and the number of uses that would be allowed and intensity that would be possibly allowed there. So, the applicant staff met and discussed the concerns that were brought up with the LPA and the possible proliferation of uses and how to make the site more compatible to the surrounding area. After that, we proposed to include Policy 1-2.11.7, the Lower Matacombe Key Mixed Use Area Two. This new subarea policy would limit the uses of this property to public and private recreational uses and storage. The applicant would still record a conservation easement on the environmentally sensitive areas of the property. After that was proposed at its meeting on June 3, the LPA unanimously voted to recommend the approval of the ordinance with that addition. And so, that being said, at this time, the staff recommends adoption of the, both ordinances with that inclusion. I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay. You want to do public comment first, Marnie?
Well, Ty gets a opportunity.
Oh, I couldn't see him behind Joe, I'm sorry. John didn't, no, he was sitting down.
I was slouching, sorry. I represent the family trust that owns the tennis center, and the tennis center has been operation, operational since 1995. The village incorporated, as we know, December 31, 1997, and promptly, if you stop me if you've heard this before, took an ongoing viable commercial business and gave it a zoning that's not compatible with what was already there. In this case, the flavor of the, of the month was residential conservation, which you don't have to be great at math, but know this, residential conservation takes 4.0 acres to meet the minimum size requirements. The property is 3.1 acres, so the property was turned into a nonconformity once the comp plan and zoning code changed the designation on it. And for many years, it wasn't an issue. 2018, as we were in the height of COVID, the tennis center closed and has not reopened. But under our code, after a year, 365 days, the use that was grandfathered in as a legal nonconforming use becomes no longer a use. So even if I had wanted to bring the tennis center back or some iteration of the tennis center with pickleball, I couldn't do it. I had to change the zoning. And in the village, there are two zoning classifications that allow private clubs. One of them is Village Center, we weren't really in the Village Center area, or the other is Neighborhood Commercial. So picking the lesser of two evils, I originally applied for Neighborhood Commercial with a number of caveats where uses were stricken. At LPA, the question came, if you, if we did restrict that property, those deed restrictions could possibly fall off after 30 years. So, we went back and Jennifer and I worked on a subarea policy. Sound familiar, sojourn? So we did a subarea policy limiting the uses to only two things, recreation, which would still allow a club, or storage, which is the other person that's been interested in buying it. It's, it's either been a group that wants to do pickleball or tennis, or a group that wants to do storage, or a group that's going to combine the two. But those are the people and those are the uses that LPA recommended unanimously seem to fit for Lower Matacombe and this property. The other thing is that as part of this, there will be a conservation easement placed over the area that's considered habitat. So the only area that could be quote redeveloped into a pickleball, tennis ball, tennis court, whatever, is the area that's already scarified. So none of the, none of the area that's, that's untouched will be touched in any redevelopment. And again, we've, we've promised that upon second reading and approval in the 30-day appeal period, we will file a conservation easement on that portion of the property. So with that, I'm going to wrap it up, and if you have any questions for me.
Did you guys restrict the height of the storage units?
Well, the village has in its charter a maximum height of 35 feet.
Are they going to do that?
I haven't heard, I've heard more outdoor storage and possibly using the existing building as some kind of, you know, little office for the outdoor storage.
Jennifer, do you know anything about that?
I don't know, but any future development like that would still have to come back through all development approval process.
It's got a new site plan.
Anything like that, so.
Okay, that's good, just checking, thank you.
We're just changing colors on a map right now.
Anybody have a question for Ty before he goes away? Go back up there.
Ty, you said that, that you were going to put a gocia on the high-quality hammock that surrounds that.
Yes.
And I know that gocias can change at, you know, with an application to the Director of Planning. Is there something that you're willing to do, or your clients willing to do, where they would in perpetuity protect that high-quality hammock and not come back and ask for the 10% clearing that would be allowed?
Absolutely. We can make that a condition of approval, voluntary, I'm proffering that because that is the intent of the owners and they would want whoever owns the property after them to honor that same condition. Nobody wants anything else touched.
So the way that you're going to, you'll modify the, y'all will agree to modify the grant's conservation easement to where it cannot be modified at the applicant to the planning group?
Right. And, and you know, on these applications, you're not required to provide a habitat or a veg survey. You don't need to do that for a zoning or a comp plan change. But Jennifer was very concerned and Daniel were, were both concerned about the habitat, and even though it wasn't required, they asked me if the applicant would be willing to, to do it, and they, we did. We, we did delineation, so we know with great degree, great degree of accuracy where that line's going to be.
You have a survey that shows the limits of the area?
Yes, yes.
Yes, we do.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Ty.
In fact, Jennifer wouldn't recommend approval of this application until we did all of that.
That is true.
Even though it wasn't, even though it's not required, she's like, if you want a recommendation for approval, you're going to have to, you're going to have to supply that. And so, we did.
Thank you.
I wouldn't even move it forward in the process till.
I'm sorry, did you say yes or no?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
So I, I wanted to commend you for making another subarea. I think it's important going forward that we, we recognize the fact that, that the area, the zoning that the people were in is not allowing things to happen that need to happen, and yet to open the door for unlimited growth in the area is not what I think we want either. So the subareas that we're coming up with, I think are very important, and I had watched both of the LPA meetings and, and you guys did a, you and Jennifer creating this did a great job, and LPA did a great job in, in trying to work through that.
Steve, are you done? I'm sorry. Don? Steve, do you have anything?
No, I think Don alleviated one of my concerns. I think that's a great point. Thank you for proffering that, and I really respect what the LPA does, and so, you know, I appreciate their recommendation, their due diligence on this.
Anna? Okay. Any, do I have to ask Ty if he wants to come back up again?
Was there anybody speaking for or against?
Do we have Joe, Sue?
Yes.
They are the only two speakers I have signed up.
Yeah, I figured that out.
There are not too many of us to do that, huh?
Yeah. Joe Hirschmeyer, Plantation Key. Some of my concerns were alleviated here because my main concern was for all the hammock, all the high-quality hammock that's around there. Number one, we don't know if even the tennis club should have been allowed to go there to begin with. How many times have we seen people, developers, that take a piece of property that is full and there are restrictions on to how much they can take, and then the next thing you know, the whole lot is done, and they say, well, we're just going to make mitigation? And I certainly hope that doesn't happen in this case. I was concerned that the, the owners were going to go for this and then try to put a whole bunch of housing and all kinds of stuff that was going to create all kinds of problems. But if it's only going to be recreational or storage and y'all put these caveats on there, that definitely alleviated a lot of my concerns, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Sue?
Sue Miller, Lower Matacombe. There is no notice on the property as required.
I asked that today and there is.
There is not a notice. I go past there every day of my life. I went past there twice today. There is no sign, there hasn't been a sign for the last three weeks.
Jennifer?
So the property was posted as properly, as required on July 1. I have pictures of the posting and I have a posting affidavit signed by the agent.
Okay. So where, John?
So, so in other words, if you want to post something, then you can take down the sign after you take a picture. Thank you. Our land development regulations provide a means for changing the official zoning map, and I quote, "It is not intended to relieve particular hardships nor to confer special privileges or rights on any person nor a permit, nor to permit a change in community character, but only to make necessary adjustments in light of changed conditions." What conditions have changed? The applicant's representative, Mr. Harris, in fact stated that the intent is to reestablish the tennis club, not to change anything, but it sounds like now that they do want to change something. But what, what has changed to cause that need to have the subarea? At the application for the map change that's in the agenda, the property owner states in his final argument, "The proposed rezoning and flum will not have an adverse effect on the community since the existing use will not change and the zoning and flum requests serve to protect that use. If in fact the intention is to protect the tennis use, the zoning should be changed to recreational use." If now they want to change the use, they need to demonstrate what conditions have changed. Two policies were cited by the staff, Comprehensive Plan Policy 1-2.1.9 and Comprehensive Plan Policy 1-2-1-14 requiring legitimate public purpose. It is the staff's opinion at one time that this request is not compatible with the two policies according to your agenda. Staff also states the proposed amendment could negatively impact an area of high-quality hammock. Our regulations are clear and no event shall amendment be approved which would result in an adverse community change, and the staff thought a commercial use would be adverse. So to overcome the objections, a subarea is proposed. I want to make it clear, I would like to have it made clear, that when that subarea says that the only uses are public and private recreational uses and storage, is that storage that would be a primary use, or are they allowed to have the sale of the stored product?
Sue, you've got on your three minutes, but I didn't know if you were doing five, so that's why I've let you go on.
I was supposed to do five, but I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, we put you at three, so go on.
Okay. Many of the residents of Lower Matacombe have long enjoyed having tennis available on the island. It appears that they were enticed by accepting the subarea idea because tennis would be allowed, but it's not required. You probably know in your hearts that if this is approved, that eventually the property will be commercial. And as we saw in the last hearing, you know, people come back, they change their mind about what they want to do and come back and ask for a change. Lower Matacombe is predominantly residential with very limited recreational opportunities without a drive-through the traffic to Upper Matacombe or Plantation Key. Most people playing tennis there in the past walked or rode bikes to get to the tennis club, reducing vehicles on the road. This is such an amazing location with Florida-owned, high-quality hardwood hammock on both sides along with Isla Marada's conservation hammock and wetlands to the back. The staff acknowledged commercial use would result in an adverse community change. I think this application should be denied if the intent, intent is to establish tennis courts as clearly stated by the.
Okay, we're at five minutes now.
The zoning should be changed to recreational.
Thank you very much. Anybody else, Marnie?
No, ma'am.
Public comment is now closed.
I just want to clarify that the requirement is that it be posted and that we receive a posting affidavit and that we see pictures of the posting. We have received those. We cannot monitor whether or not someone else removes the signs, or if they were taken down by the weather, or somebody mowing the lawn, or something else, so.
I called you today about that.
Yes, ma'am.
And she did tell me it was done legally, because I checked. So, okay. So council, where are we? Does anybody have anything else to say? Anna?
She was green-lined, so let her go.
Anything?
I would do motion to approve.
Well, we have to do, we have to do these separately, so, does anybody have anything else to say before we take these separately? Deb? No, I'm sorry, get her.
No, she made a motion and I was going to second.
Okay, so the first motion's going to be, am I right, on the first tab?
Yeah, it would be, we're taking them separately, so it would be motion approved.
Yes, that's what I was going to.
Say something about it.
Oh, go ahead.
It's okay, I just.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, it was incorrectly zoned, like so many other properties in the village in the first place, and we're still cleaning up a mess of that, and I hope that, I pray, that when our comp plan is done, if we change our zonings, if we change our flums, that we actually ground-truth every one of those so we make sure that we do it the right way, because this is probably at least the 50th one that's come in front of council, that, that is an obvious incorrect zoning. You had it happen, I've probably changed 10 from that podium there, so maybe more. It's just, it's right and wrong is really what it is.
Okay, so, I, did I have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Okay, Marnie, would you call, this is on the first tab, right? Okay. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
And just to clarify, council, council member Gillis, seconded?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Council member Anna Richards?
Yes.
Council member Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Council member Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
The motion passes 5 to 0.
Okay. Now we're going to go to the second, second one, right?
Yes.
So it's changing from native residential to neighborhood commercial. Anybody have anything to say before we take a motion? Okay, do I have a motion? Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
It was funny.
I got you.
Got it! She had it right there on the tip of her mouth. Marnie, call the roll, please.
Council member Anna Richards?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
Council member Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Council member Deb Gillis?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
That motion passes 5 to 0.
Okay. John, I believe we're on the last one.
Yep, last one is tab F, still part of quasi-judicial. It's a resolution of the village council of Isla Marada Village of Islands, Florida considering the request of Patricia Essinger for a variance from the provisions of Section 30-691E4C rear yard setback to allow for the construction of an addition with the rear yard setback for property located at 80951 Old Highway on Upper Matacombe Key within the SR Settlers Residential Zoning District with real estate number 00096200-000000 as legally described herein and providing for an effective date. Again, council, if you will, please advise, disclose any ex parte communications that you may have had, and please include whether the person represented in any group or entity as well as the subject matter as you recall.
Deb? None. Don?
Patty Stanley.
None for me? I'm sorry, none for me?
None for me.
None.
Okay.
Thank you, council. This again is a request for your setback.
Get the property located at 80951 Old Highway. This property is located in Upper Matacombe. The property is approximately 11,180 square feet. It's, sorry, I pushed it. Settlers Residential Zoning District within the mixed use, future land use map category. The site is adjacent to commercial properties located within the highway commercial zoning district to the north, south, and west, and residential properties located within the Settlers Residential and multifamily zoning districts to the east. There is currently a multifamily duplex residence on the site. The applicant is seeking a variance to encroach within the 20-foot rear setback to allow a 9-foot rear setback. Pursuant to Section 30221D, when considering a variant, application for variance, the director and village council shall consider the following factors, and no variance shall be approved which fails to meet the standards below. Failed to comply with any of the standards shall be deemed adverse to the public interest. One, special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved and which are not applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same zoning district. In order to meet the existing foundation, the concrete slab must encroach into the setback. The addition is being constructed for those with mobility issues and the aging population and the access needs to be level with the existing home. Number two, the special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. The topography, size, and shape of the property dictate how the slab should be poured. Number three, the literal interpretation of the provisions of this chapter deprives the applicants of the right, commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district under the terms of this chapter and works unnecessary and undue hardship on the applicant. Under Section 30-691, accessory structures are limited to single-family structures only. This literal interpretation is a hardship for the applicant. Number four, granting the variance requested conveys the same treatment to the individual owner as the owners of other lands, buildings, and structures of the same zoning district. Granting the variance would provide the applicant with the same treatment by allowing what amounts to an accessory structure a reduced setback. The variance, if granted, is a minimum variance that makes it possible for the reasonable use of the land, building, or structure. That is correct. Number six, the grant of the variance is in harmony with the general intent and purpose of this chapter and is not injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. The property is surrounded by commercial activity. Granting this variance would not be injurious to the neighborhood and otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. At this time, staff has reviewed the request for the variance and determined that the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan and does comply with the applicable provisions of the code of ordinances. Therefore, staff recommends that the village council approve the proposed variance to the construction of an attached accessory structure with the required 20-foot rear setback to allow for a 9-foot rear setback by adoption of the attached resolution. I'm here if you have any questions.
Anybody have anything for Jennifer? Okay, I guess, opposed?
Yeah, the applicant's not here, so.
I know. Are you opposed? Do you want to get and say anything?
I'm not even going to speak on this.
There you go. All right, so public com.
Yeah.
Public comment, yeah, keep it going. Okay, so council, anybody have any questions for Jennifer or any comments? Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, just to reiterate, all of the, the surrounding areas and neighbors, they've been notified of, of this.
Yeah, I just confirmed that based on the last conversation. They were, the property was posted on July 3, and we received a posting affidavit as well on July 3, and all the return mail receipts were sent back to us on July 22.
And, and so, no feedback from anyone?
No, sir.
Okay. And then, I'm just curious about the outdoor shower. Is that, is that just part of the requirement because of the limited amount of space that they had, that they just built this three-wall?
That would be a question for, for the applicant. That's their design. I had, we didn't require that.
Okay, so it had nothing to do with the requirements of?
No.
You done? Yeah? Go ahead, Don.
I just, looking at the other properties to the, to the Keys North and Keys South on there and, and all the commercial that's around it, it looks like there's a plethora of nonconformities and, and rear yard setbacks. It's not going to change the community character in any way, and staff recommends approval, so if there's not any other comment, I'd make a motion to approve.
Let me ask. Deb, do you have anything to say? Anna? Go ahead.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Marnie, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
Council member Anna Richards?
Yes.
Council member Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Council member Deb Gillis?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Okay. Jennifer, I need to tell you that when during the break, the, one for September 11, Gino, the attorneys asked if they could be up in the standings, and I said I didn't.
We would put them, excuse me, we would put them as the first quasi-judicial item.
Okay, she asked, and you guys were all gone, so.
Yeah, if there's things that are not quasi-judicial, they would have to go first, but just by the ways your order is, but.
Okay, well, anything else we need to do, or are we done? Ron, do you have anything to say? Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you.